So we will open the April 16th, 2019, meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board. First one to pass general law, we are recording this meeting for the minutes and LCAT is taping the meeting. I'd like to know if anyone else is recording the meeting, so please identify yourself. Hearing none, we proceed. We have John Torchet, Boomer Vito, Russ Denver, George Kingston, and Ty Richards here. So we're forward. Minutes of April 2nd. Did you get those? I just got them today. Shall we?
Yeah.
First thing on the agenda is site plan waivers. We have one for Cmart. Do you want to read that?
CPRW 2009-10 Cmart, request by applicant for site plan waiver for installation of a new door at 668 North Main Street, AKA 664 North Main Street, assessors parcel ID 1A-22-60, located in Business Zoning District. Applicant said Moby, 668 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Mass.
Anyone here to tell us about this, what they're planning on doing? Looks like not many. Let me go look at what you've got here.
Mr. Aspar.
What's that?
Mr. Aspar. Abid. I'm supposed to be here.
Just pull it out. I think we may have enough information here to do it. Just got a little organized.
Abid?
Yep.
Come on up and tell us what you want to do with your door. Come. So what are you planning on doing with your door?
Yeah, this is windows replaced by the door.
Okay.
It's already windows there.
Yeah.
So just we have to replace the window with it.
Okay, so did we real change the configuration?
No, no.
Okay, any questions on the board on this one?
Yeah, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Further discussion? Russ is still looking at it.
One second now.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, you're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
SPRW 2019-11 Glossy Design for Shaker Road, request by applicant for site plan waiver for boutique at 60 Shaker Road, assessors parcel ID 27-170-0, located in Business Zoning District. Applicant is Latina Dukenson, 69 Lucarine Road, Springfield, Mass.
So this is a boutique in an existing retail area? Motion to approve?
If you'd back it, if you want to see your file. So which spot are you taking at that location? What was in it, the project?
It was a hair salon.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're good to go.
Thank you.
SPRW 2019-12 Subsurface LLC for Shaker Road, request by applicant for site plan waiver for a business offering underground site surveying services at 143C Shaker Road, Suite 206, assessors parcel ID 58-63-0, located in Residential A Zoning District. Applicant is Beth Provencher, 1550 Mapleton Avenue, Southfield, Connecticut.
Is that residential? Sir, my name's John McDonald, behalf of the applicant. I'm not sure it's residential, it says Industrial Zoning District.
Says here Residential A Zoning District.
Well, I'm not sure if that's right.
It is.
It's an office building.
143C Shaker Road.
It's an office building right across from the pizza place.
That's industrial.
It's industrial zone. There might be a typo there, sir.
Yeah, it might be a typo.
Anyway, it's an existing office building. It's been there for a number of years and she's just running an office, no employees, two members in the LLC, ran an office in an office building and we're applying for a site plan waiver.
Any questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're good to go.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next we have continuation of public hearing on definitive subdivision plan for Jeffrey Lane South. So we will open the continuation of the public hearing for Jeffrey Lane South. Recall last time we had some comments from DPW that had not yet been answered. Where do we stand on this one?
You have comments? You should have your comments.
Okay, have we gotten revised plans?
They have them this evening, they did email them.
Okay, someone would like to come forward and address this? You went through three of them pretty quickly.
We'll change that pace.
Usually it takes quite a while. Well, we're back with the Jeffrey Lane subdivision and all of the changes that were requested by DPW have been made and I guess he's wrote all that.
Did you show us the plans?
It was basically details. Had me add, I had an overflow pipe on the, for the leaching structure and he made me take that out. The other things were the details for the roadway, the hydrant detail. So that was about it.
Okay. Anyone from the public wish to address the Jeffrey Lane subdivision? Hearing none, I take it back to the board. Any additional questions or comments? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any waivers to vote on on this one?
I think the only thing we request, or one of the things would have been the sidewalk.
Right, and the other would have been the width of the road, I believe. Right. Just to make sure we cover everything. We have, here's a set with all the changes.
Thank you, sir.
Don't see any requests for waivers in here. That's simply the cover sheet that says what, oh, I went one page too fast, sorry.
No worries, we got it.
Okay, so they're asking for a waiver of demolition plan because there's no existing Waiver of a construction layout planned site because they're only constructing a single family home. They did do the drainage, so that doesn't need to be waived. They did the landscape plan.
Yes.
That doesn't need to be waived. Basically, the waivers they're asking for is sidewalk, waiver of the sidewalk, waiver of traffic study. We did not waive the stormwater report because they did one. And I don't see any waiver requested for street width, so we assume they're doing the street width.
Right, we're going to conform with the existing pavement that's there now. I think it's 26 feet.
So the only waiver really is for the sidewalk. Do I have a motion to waive sidewalk?
I'll make a motion.
Whoa, whoa, wait just one second before we do. Didn't we talk about the sidewalk at the last meeting? What did we say? Just refresh my memory.
I think we talked about how we wanted.
No, because there's only one, there's really one billable.
Right, and there's no sidewalk.
That's right. Okay, that's right. Yeah, I get one. Okay, I'm good.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have, do I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of waiving the sidewalk?
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor, do I have a motion to, the site plan, the subdivision plan, I'm sorry?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the subdivision plan? You've gone through all the hoops DPW wanted them to go through? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the subdivision plan is approved.
I have a question. Mylars, do you need two full sets or one full set or?
Two Mylar, but we're not ready to get there yet.
Right, I know, but just so I know ahead of time.
Sure.
Is it for the whole set of plans or just?
The whole set of plans.
The whole set, so two full sets.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's going to be about 35 days to take this decision. Thank you for discussing.
I just want to know, I got a lot of papers, so all Mylar, you know where to get them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and the next one, Fairview Extended Care Services.
Okay, SP.
Let me, we will open the public hearing for Fairview Extended Care Services from Maple Street.
SP 2019-03 Fairfield Extended Care Services for Maple Street, request by applicant for amended to site plan permit, 2017-03, for signage at 305 Maple Street, assessors parcel ID 6-9-0, a combined 19.41 acre site, Residential B Zoning District. Applicant owner, Fairview Extended Care Services Inc., 75 North Main, North Street, Suite 210, Pittsfield, Mass.
Can you put them over there?
Yes, of course.
Lou, can you see through the corner there?
Yeah, I'm good.
My name is Vicki Donahue, I'm attorney at Haney, Britton, Myers in Pittsfield and we represent Fairview Extended Care Services. In connection with this petition, we actually will be before this board in June of 2017 for the original special permit, which was for the construction of the 84,000 square foot skilled nursing facility, that's the center building there, and then the renovation of the existing skilled nursing facility as an assisted living facility and space for Dr. Felipe. At that time then we had not yet determined what we were going to have for signage and we're actually trying to determine what the actual branding would be. You may recall, I have a, going to flip up just a little bit, just as a little plan there. You may recall that this is part of like an overall campus that we have all the way up to the back here. The little one on the back. Yes, I'm sorry it's a small, but you see our two buildings on the top and then below then you've got the two buildings that are on the seven acre parcel that we sold to Long Meadow Medical Arts Complex. So the building on the lower part on the right is the existing Bay State Building and the other building over to the left is the proposed building that'll be for the additional general office space, medical office on one side, general office on the other. So at the time that we had got the original special permit and that they also did on the LMAC side, then we had not yet determined what we were going to be doing for signing and really trying to address the best way to direct people to the site since we have so many uses coming off of the two locations. We've got one location coming off of Dwight Road on the Long Meadow side, which continues through the site as approved by this board in 2017. And then the second entrance is off of Maple Street. Since that time we've determined that we're going to be calling, and you'll see in your packet, that we're going to be calling this location Meadows Crossing. So on the tops of the signs that are at the street then we've got Meadows Crossing so that people can kind of designate that as a location that they're going to be going to. And then the signs beyond that indicate who the various users are of the premises so that you know where you're going to go. And so we have brought forward the signs for the approval, that is an amendment to the special permit. We sent the zoning determination to the building inspector and came back and said that the appropriate way to approve these was to come to you for an amendment to the existing special permit under Section 7.26. The signs that were coming before you today are actually kind of a complement to what has already been approved in Long Meadow for the other side of the location coming off of Dwight. So off of Dwight Street then they have an existing pylon sign that actually is already erected and that's the, like the stone base, actually I think I have a, it's like the stone base and then it has the panels below for who the various occupants are. Well, this is the one that's on, this is the one on Long Meadow, so it's the same as ours that was on there. So if you flip back to the front page, then that's the overall location. So on here then we have lettered both in your packet and here, the various signs that we're proposing for this location. The sign number A, and Harry Arubak is here from Agnoli Signs, and is going to kind of step you through all what the various signs are, but as a general overview, sign A is the sign that's at Maple, so that people coming along the street are going to know to come in there. We want to make sure that that's something that's visible because if people are coming down Maple, then we don't want them to miss that and go all the way down and then go to Dwight. You know, we're really trying, when we had talked at the original special permit hearing, then we wanted to make sure that people are directed to the site and are able to find it and not do anything in terms of increase in traffic along there, although I must say I'm pretty impressed with the traffic, the new traffic signals and everything else. It really looks great and it seems to be working well. The other signs that Harry will go through as well are, I guess under your bylaw, mostly wayfinding signs or directional signs, so they're to help people once they get onto the site to be able to make sure they go to the right building, the right parking area and direct them through. So some, as Harry will explain, are coming off of Maple, so it's to say which way to go to go to the assisted living facility, which way to turn in order to go to the assisted living facility, and then also a direction to continue through the site if they're going to be going to the Bay State Building. And on the flip side of those signs then it has, coming in off of the Dwight side, the directionals to say which direction to go in order to get to assisted living and the skilled nursing. And also we have a sign in front for Dr. Felipe. So I think, Harry, if you wanted to go through the signs then that would be helpful.
Again, my name is Harry Arubak, I'm with Agnoli Signs. And again, we did the production of the signs in Long Meadow and for consistency, we're going to signs in East Long Meadow. Sign A, very much like the one I'm going to speak, is eternally illuminated. It's the only term, eternally, eternally illuminated sign. All the other signs are what we call ground lit. Signs B, there's B and B1, that identify skilled nursing. C identifies assisted living. D is Meadows Podiatry. Those are all what we call, they identify each individual property of the building. They're carved signs made out of, what we call HDU, high density sign foam, very typical, what is actually there now and very typical of what Berkshire uses at other facilities. The other two are wayfinding, E and E1, metal signs with directional arrows, double sided so that if you're egressing, it tells you you're going out to Maple Street, or if you're here that you're heading towards skilled nursing or assisted living. Again, just very, and they complement the signs from Dwight Street.
And each of the individual signs then you have the specifications in your packets as well.
Any public hearing, are there any questions from the public on this one? Comments? Hearing none, take it back to the board. Any questions? Basically, we're amending the special permit because that would include the site plan and the signs were not shown. This will be have a plan that shows what's really going to look like. Okay. Questions, comments?
One comment that we did get, and I just wanted to address here, is that we got a request from, this morning, from the DPW to talk about the sightlines that are coming off of Maple. So I think if you look at, if you look at the sign there, then we have provided, and we've got a new copy that we can put around, that shows where the actual location is going to be of that sign that's off of Maple. So essentially it shows there that we have along Maple, we have a 20-foot, one more. So along Maple then we have, you can see on the main plan, then we've got a sidewalk along the street and from the property line back then we have a 20-foot buffer which is for a landscape buffer. So in that area on the original site plan and the special permit plan, then that shows low plantings that are there. So what we've shown on this supplemental plan that we've given you is that we'll have the edge of the sign, which is closest to the street, is going to be about 16 feet back. That's important because when you come out, what the DPW was asking about, because they couldn't tell on the plan, is when you come off of, out of the site and then are coming up to Maple, then there's a stop sign there. So the sign is going to be on your right when you're coming out. So with the sign there then, when you're looking to the left, if you're going to be making a left-hand turn, then you'd want to be looking to the right to see if anyone's coming. So it's 16 feet back, the people who are coming off of, coming along Maple, when you want to pull out and make a left-hand turn, then those folks will be on the other side of the street because they're going to be coming in that direction. So you're going to have the width of the street, one side of the street for the one-way traffic, and then you're going to have the 16 feet back. So that's going to give people who are sitting at the driveway, trying to turn left or trying to turn right, the ability to see. Those who are turning right aside is important because they're going to turn right into their lane, so they're not going to need to intersect with people who are coming along there. In addition, when you're coming up Maple, then you can see on the main plan that it's kind of a straightaway and then Maple Street goes off, so that when you're actually sitting at the entrance to Maple from the property, then you're going to have a better sightline for the people coming off closer to Maple and Dwight because of the way that the road appears off there. So that was, this supplemental plan was in response to the DPW request to address sightlines where, on the side where the sign is being located.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Looks good? All those in favor?
Aye.
You're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we now have a hearing for a takeout restaurant for North Main Street. We will open the public hearing for the takeout restaurant for North Main Street.
SP 2019-04 Takeout Restaurant for North Main Street, request by applicant for a special permit for takeout restaurant at 192 North Main Street, assessors parcel ID 25-3-4, located on a 4,832 square foot site in the Business Zoning District. Applicant is owner, Vincenzo Amore, 20 Rollins Drive, East Long Meadow, Mass.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you introduce yourself, please?
I'm Alfred Jeffreyan Jr. I'm an attorney representing Vincenzo Amore. He is intending to open a takeout-only restaurant in an existing building. These plans show that they do plan on updating the exterior with new siding, some awnings, et cetera. There is a very small pickup area, the rest of it is kitchen, the second floor would be office space.
Can you begin by explaining to us what a takeout-only restaurant is, how it's a restaurant if it's a takeout-only?
It provides food, but there's no consumption on premises.
So how does this differ from a catering establishment or a food vendor?
I would assume that you could call it a food vendor, although it's prepared food. Catering would be catering off-site, which is not what this is, although there may be some catering off-site, but as far as onsite, it's just food preparation and sales to order for takeout, consumption on premises.
We're going to ask, we have a definition for restaurants in our zoning bylaw, and it defines a restaurant as a place where people eat, okay? And so the takeout-only in restaurants somehow, I have a little difficulty figuring out how they work together.
Well, then my terminology is incorrect because there will be no consumption on premises.
Okay, so tell us more about this.
So the first sheet shows the construction on the interior. The sheet shows the front elevation, and as I said, they plan on new siding, some awnings over the doorways. This is the one other elevation. And these are just showing the exterior of the building. There's an existing parking lot, this has been used in the past, not as a restaurant space, but commercially. There are seven marked parking spaces, which we believe are sufficient for the purpose.
First of all, what is the concept?
Okay, I'm sorry, I should have backed that up. Vincenzo Amore runs Typical Sicilian in Springfield, it's an Italian restaurant. He's proposing here a takeout based on his menus at Typical Sicilian.
Okay. Now, two, and I, before we take it to the public, okay, I have two major issues with this. First of all, there are no handicap parking spaces shown. And second of all, I'm having a problem with the access, and we did ask the Public Safety Officer to comment, I don't think we've gotten any comments back from him yet, but you've got one 12, sorry, 10-foot driveway and one 5-foot driveway, which isn't really adequate to provide circulation. And you could address that because you can't get two-way traffic in a 12-foot driveway.
That could be, that could be handled with a one-way in, one-way out.
But is 5 feet wide enough to get the out, get a vehicle through the outside?
I have two gentlemen here that are employed in the business. One of you could dress up?
One of the driveways I believe is a shared, it's shared with the, almost like a shared driveway next door to the building right next door? Is that the one you're referring to, is 5 feet?
Yeah.
And then the one, so if you're facing the building, the one on the right side, that would be the 12-foot?
Yeah.
Right, so it's actually bigger than 5 feet.
Okay, is there an easement for that?
You mean a curb cut?
An easement with the owner next door that will continue to allow you to use that?
I'm not sure.
That's an existing driveway, it's been there for.
I understand, but if the person next door sells the building and a new person decides to put the fence, you don't have a driveway anywhere.
Yeah. Understood, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, I think that's a question that's going to need to be answered before we can act on this.
Okay.
Okay, because, well, a couple things. First of all, the fire truck can't get in there if it's 5 feet wide, okay? And fire is always concerned that they have two beams of access, obviously. You know, if somebody's parked over here and they need to get in, they have an issue. And then the handicapped, provision of a handicap parking space is also critical. Having said that, this being a public hearing, do I have any comments or questions from the public on this?
Joseph Torchet, 283 North Main Street.
Yes.
Just concerned about the traffic that it's going to create. There's already so much traffic on North Main Street, the amount of businesses going in, to add another business, I just don't think it's a good fit. Typical Sicilian, great restaurant, just don't think it's a good fit. Thank you.
Please.
Hi, my name is Vonda Bernarche, I own 188 North Main, that's the 12-foot driveway, and I've been there for almost 40 years. Haven't, if I may take the floor, please, haven't been there so many years, we used to have a dental lab there next door, and you've brought up a good point, you know, it's always, I've always been boxed in. You know, I've always sort of been traffic director out there. So, and I want Enzo to come, I really, really do. I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but it's, I don't know what to say about it, you know, I've been, it's like, you know, you're right, you know, it's going to be a circular, I've been sandwiched in with cofflins, and that's another issue that I've been, probably go to my grave, it'll never be fixed, and but, you know, it's, it is an issue. And you're right, you know, I mean, people have suggested to me to put up a fence, but I would never do that, you know. And I'm the one actually to make my driveway much, much wider, so the people who were there before Enzo bought the property, we could have. there before Enzo bought the property, we could have. But it is an existing issue, you know? I'm willing to work on it, you know? I'm willing to work with Enzo. I'm not opposed to it, because, you know, I love the restaurant. Will there be traffic? Well, there's traffic now anyway, so.
The issue with the shared driveway, obviously, if you and he were willing to execute a cross-easement that says that you have, you both have the right to use the full width of the driveway, that would take care of it.
You know what my issue, you know what the biggest issue there that's always been, is that, you know, people come in, they park right in the driveway. My clients can't get out. So, you know, we've already had a couple of bumper fenders over the years, you know, especially, you know, okay, for example, when the dental lab was there, people came in, took out, you know, the prostheses. So consequently, you know, they would sit in a driveway, you know? And actually, the truth is, people don't want to walk in the back and park, you know? I mean, so they park in the front, they park in the side, and, you know, then everyone is upset, and I have to go out there and direct traffic. So I become the bad woman on the street, you know? But my clients need to get out, and they need to come in, you know?
Agreed.
Anyway, well, thank you for listening to me.
Okay. Anyone else, please?
Hi, Lady Beney. I phone a home on Dewey Ave. So my concern, of course, is the traffic and how the traffic has increased. There's a liquor store across the street. There was just a humongous accident there on Saturday night. That was awful. I saw pretty much the whole thing. And basically, there are five driv, there's two entr, one entrance, one exit at the gas station, gentleman's quarters, Meadow Place driveway. There are so many driveways. There are businesses, and people cut the corners, and it's just not a, it's just not appealing for homeowners or business owners. It's a lot of traffic. It's going, and it is a high-traffic area, and we're going to make it a higher-traffic area. And I think that is taking away some of the charm of our town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sir. Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. You want all the way up?
Yeah.
Okay. Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. I just wanted to comment with your question as far as restaurant. In 2015, the definitions were changed. It's now an establishment where food and drink is prepared and/or served within the primary building or for takeout.
Okay, so the "or" is written in that?
Absolutely.
For correcting me. We'll get back to the board, please.
You know, if I may say, you know, if Enzo, if we decide, if he decides to, you agree with this, you know? I want Enzo to come in. I'm not opposed to it. Listen, I'm a businesswoman, and I love businesses. So, you know, if we can, maybe he'll put up a sign and say, you know, I have a little sign on my side that says, "Please do not block driveway." But maybe if he could compliment me with having one of his, and see to it that we do not, you know, it's a big issue.
Yeah.
And I hear her concern with the backing out, but we are a business location, you know?
But the driveways, the access to.
Yeah.
To the parking is a huge ordeal. It's a big problem. People back out, and there's trucks, there's just no regard for anyone. Getting down my street is hard.
Is there a drawing of what it's going to look like? We do.
Can we see it? The house itself isn't going to change. It's still going to represent itself as a house from the.
It is right here, if you should look at it. It doesn't depict the exterior, though.
Yes, it does.
As it does. A good point. I'll bring us back to the board. Any questions from the board? No, no.
That's the front row.
We, we're not going to close it, because.
And besides the same thing.
Yeah, I think we need to, yeah. So I live about 1,000 feet from there. And I just want to echo that young woman's comment. So we have Sunoco Station, and you have Yolanda, you have Boston. Directly across the street, we have Lighthouse Liquor. And then you have the bank right in the corner. You've got Westwood, Maple Shade, all intersection with North Main Street. You then have Dewey Street, and then you have Frank Wayne Street. Getting out on North Main Street any time of any day anymore in this town is next to impossible. You didn't mention whether there's parking, designated parking in front of the building. Is there?
Two spaces in front by the. And the two in front, I would argue that can be designated as handicap, or one of them, depending on what's needed based on our use. And that there's no new curb cuts. I mean, the driveways are there.
Or would you petition the town council to make it no parking in front of that, in front of that building?
I think that the intent is to have.
Because I think the problem is adding more on the street becomes a traffic safety issue.
Well, this is not on-street parking. This is off-street.
No, I'm talking on North Main Street, right in front of the building.
Correct.
Can you park there?
No.
Okay.
But there are, in front of the building, on the property, off-street, there are two spaces.
That'll look good.
Well, and then you're going to be adding a highly reputable restaurant that people are going to want to come to.
Oh, it's very good.
Yeah. And it's going to create a lot of traffic. It is. And it's only based on the reputation.
Unfortunately, Enzo is not in state right now and asked me to come in and talk to you. And again, I'm not totally familiar with the project. I have the basics down. As far as the easement for the driveway, I will research that, and we'll work with the butter. And we can certainly design a traffic flow around the building for parking.
And the handicap space needs to get in there. You have, I don't see in here, I haven't gone through it page by page, a request for waiver of traffic studies, which I'm beginning to hear it might be necessary to have a traffic study.
I've never seen the application, so I don't know, but I will certainly talk to my client.
This is on the old application form, kind of? So there's, there's no request in here that I can see on the site plan request to waive the traffic study. And I think that, having heard what we've heard tonight, we'd like to take a vote by the board, but, let's see, it says right here, it's supposed to be a traffic study. Let's see if it's in here. Let's see the zoning determination. Let's see. Let's see the deed information. I do not see a traffic study. And a butter information. So to speed things up, you might want to consider initiating a traffic study, because we're hearing that traffic is a big issue, and I think the public needs to know whether or not it's going to, new traffic is going to be an issue or not. Any other questions from the board, for, so back to the board at this point?
Also, as someone that lives relatively nearby there as well, on a part-time basis, I think traffic is the big inhibitor, and I think it's very much necessary to try to do a traffic study.
What is in there now, do you know?
It's vacant.
It's empty. Okay.
It's been vacant for probably two years now. Almost two years now.
Take it back to the public one more time. We have a question?
In addition with the traffic.
You going to identify yourself again?
It's a restaurant food service.
Yes.
David Frye.
And, please?
16 Westwood.
Sir, would you mind going on, just because I can't hear you, for the people at home.
16 Westwood Avenue. I, because it's a restaurant, and you're going to be having a food service, there's going to be a waste disposal. So you're looking at taking one of these big trucks and going down this small alleyway, which I consider an alleyway, I'm not really saying. That truck's going to have to come back out on a very busy road.
Oh, you have a full.
It's not going to be able to turn around, that truck.
It can turn around. So you're going to come in, dump the dumpster, and go back out this way. As long as Vonda agrees to share her driveway with us, it's fair.
Do you currently have a big truck that comes in to use the truck?
I had a, I had a delivery of a Kellyford F truck, big truck, come right in, pull all the way around, and come off. It's, it won't be an issue. But anyways.
I just have a concern that there's a large truck trying to get out on the North Main Street, because cars come flying through there all the time. It seems like a dangerous area.
I also, then, on the, on the site plan application, there's no designated dumpster spot. And require dumpsters to be shown on the site plan, and also that the dumpster be screened. So I don't know whether that will take out one of your parking spots, or if that's something you need to look into. Ms. Richards?
Marilyn Richards, 342 Pinehurst. Quick question. We're dealing with a takeout restaurant that doesn't have any seats. The second story is in office use. What parking formula are you using for this parcel?
I don't know that we've decided that yet.
Thank you.
Because we don't really have the parking plan here yet in terms of the handicap parking zone and the dumpster. It may end up with fewer spaces than they have now. So I'm going to see what they have, and then we'll see whether we approve it or not.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
You have nothing from the architect, from her view about the parking? There's nothing?
Uh, under the site plan, there's nothing.
If I may?
What?
If I may?
Yeah.
On the site plan, there is a parking chart, existing parking spaces, seven existing stripes, but you're not calculating how many are needed. So there's no zoning matrix that tells us what you have, what is proposed.
Okay. All right. I wasn't sure. I thought, okay.
Thank you.
So, if I may, I have another question before. Is the restaurant going to be cooking there, or are they going to be bringing food in?
Everything's going to be prepped at, on location.
On, on, at North Main?
Yes. Right. Nothing from Typical Sicilian Springfield is going to make its way to East Long Meadow. Everything's going to be prepped, made there, per order, and when you come in, you just take, come in and get your food and take it home.
Any other questions from the board at this point? Not, I'll entertain a motion to continue this to, you don't know if May 7th is going to be timed enough for me to.
I frankly don't know.
I would prefer to continue it to the second one in May.
No, I'll do the first.
Would you beat the 20?
Your work session is May 7th, so we really should keep to our.
To the 21st.
Please, thank you.
To take, a motion to continue this hearing to the 21st of May?
I'll make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we also have a, a hearing on the site plan for the takeout restaurant, same place?
You agree this?
We're going to open it?
Yep. Site, 2019-06 Takeout Restaurant for North Main Street, requested by applicant for a site plan for a takeout restaurant at 192 North Main Street, Sessors Parcel ID 25-3-4, located on a 4,832-square-foot site in the business zoning district. Applicant is Vincenzo Amore, 20 Rawlins Drive, East Long Meadow.
Motion to continue this one also to the 21st of May.
I'll make a motion to continue.
All of you in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're official.
You could love to have them in town. Oh, my God. I just, making that site work is going to be a challenge. Okay, we have now our major one tonight. Open the hearing for a proposed commercial development at 244 Shaker Road.
Site 2019-05 Proposed Commercial Development for Shaker Road, requested by applicant for construction of proposed 2,500-square-foot bank and 5,500-square-foot commercial building at 244 Shaker Road, Sessors Parcel ID 18-35-0, on a 133,217-square-foot site located in residential A and business zoning district. Applicant SIVAD Development Partners LP, One Market Place, Suite 1300, Springfield, Mass.
Before we actually get into this, I want to explain two things. First of all, this is a hearing on a site plan. The zoning enforcement officer has made a determination that the proposed use is an allowed use in the zone where it's proposed to go. Our job is to look at the site plan and make sure that the plan as presented meets the standards that are set out in the zoning bylaw. Okay? So we're reviewing the site plan to make sure it fits. The second thing that will come out quickly in the hearing is that the Conservation Commission has not yet issued an order of conditions on this, which means that the Conservation Commission is still debating whether or not the plan as proposed meets the requirements of the Wetlands Act. And so we will have to continue this hearing until Conservation Commission acts. The reason for that is, if we approve a plan, and then Conservation says, oh, they need six more feet of buffer, if our hearing is closed, we'd have to hold another hearing after that to look at the revised plan. So rather than complicate things that way, we will hear the presentation, we will hear the public tonight, we will ask questions, but we will not be able to close the hearing and vote on it until Conservation acts. Did I see a member of the Conservation Commission in back? Am I correct there?
Yes.
Thank you. So identify yourself and tell us what you're planning on doing.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, I'm Rob Lebec from our Lebec Associates. Here this evening with Jim Martin from Robinson Donovit. He is the attorney representing SIVAD or the Davis family. Again, we have done before you with this site, I believe, a couple times, or at least once. We were originally looking at doing a Dunkin' Donuts on this site. That has since changed. We're here for this evening, as you've mentioned, with a proposed 2,500-square-foot bank and a proposed commercial building. We do not have a specific tenant for the commercial building, but we're anticipating that it would be a convenience-style retailer, we'll call it. With that, as you mentioned, we filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. We had a meeting last week, at which time we discussed a number of items related to a bordering vegetated wetland that comes down.
Define convenience-style retailer. 7-Eleven, Dunk, 7-Eleven-type store?
I don't want to speak to, I guess, I guess a, that would.
Cumberland Farms?
Cumberland, no.
That's a convenience store?
I think Cumberland Farms is a different model. I don't want to speak to that. We haven't had any conversations with a specific user, but certainly convenience, not a gas station, not that type of use.
Thank you.
I'm thinking more, it could be service, local service folks, something that you might already see in East Long Meadow that, you know, wants to find a new spot, that type of thing.
Okay.
Thanks.
So again, the two buildings are proposed. We have a wetland that kind of cuts down the middle of our property, so we filed with the Conservation Commission, and we filed what's called a notice of intent. And again, for your chairs, your comments, absolutely accurate, or that process is pending. So we're here tonight to present to you our plan, and then provide you with detail. We have, as late as this afternoon, provided a traffic impact analysis. We would expect that you would not have had time to review that this evening, so we actually had our traffic engineer hold off on coming, so that when there are specific questions and you guys have had time to review it, he'll be at the next, next meeting.
So he might want to address two things. So I went through that this afternoon. So there's a picture of the intersection. And you can see La Fiorentina. You can see your parcel. You can see the house across the street. And then what is missing on the other side of that intersection?
The gas station?
No gas station in that picture. How can that be?
It's probably just an old aerial.
Well, let's put it all out there.
So.
So then the other thing, I have the floor. So the other thing that's missing, if I can get my train of thought back there. Oh, I think, I believe there is language in there that talks about going to the Mass Department of Transportation and the City's Planning Department to see what other type of commercial activity or other building activity is going to take place in that immediate area. And there's no reference to potentially 600 units of housing at the next lot. So why I bring these up is if you're going to put, present a study to us, it should be done correctly and all the information should be there.
So that's good information for you to take back to your traffic engineer so that they are prepared to answer those questions.
Because if I'm going to put it into the record, it should be accurate.
Yeah, so just to clarify, there's, right now, McMahon Associates has prepared their analysis based on the current existing, the existing scenario, and then a proposed build out. So in their proposed build out, if you would like to, right now, they are not proposing a 600 unit project. Someone else is contemplating that, I'm aware of that because I'm involved in that project. That said, I believe that is, if anything, to be accurate, is in the infant stages and may or may not happen. Certainly, traffic mitigation would be part of that project. We'd like to think that might happen. I think it's a positive project for the town. That project, the unit count, the development of that project...
I know what I know the unit count is and we've been talking about it for nine months.
Excuse me, let him answer.
Yeah, so, yeah, if I could get through my presentation, if you have to answer any questions you have, but that specific project is, there's so many variables with that project that there would be no way for us to study. It could be 300 units, 600 units, it could be 100 units, it could be 50 units, we don't know at this point. So with that, if I, I'll get back to my presentation and I will absolutely make sure that the aerial is updated, but the information that's been provided, to my knowledge, is accurate because it's based on the build out. The traffic study was done after the gas station was available. Innovative Data, the subcontractor for the traffic engineer, went out and provided specific information related to our project, specific counts after the gas station was in. We certainly have not contemplated what that 600 unit project will do, but certainly that's something that that applicant would be required to do and mitigation associated with that. So we're looking at our project development and, or I should say, the existing conditions and our project development. So I will have, be happy to answer any further questions on the traffic if I could just get through.
Sure, please do.
Kind of the overview. So we have, we actually have a curb cut on Chestnut Street for the bank. We do not have a curb cut onto Shaker for the bank. We have two curb cuts for the proposed commercial building. We have drainage areas to accommodate the impervious surfaces on each of the sites here and here. I apologize that this doesn't have the striping on, so I'll show you that in a second. This is our color plan for the, for the Conservation Commission, but just to give you an overview of what we're thinking and what's being proposed, these, this creme lade pattern here is the proposed tree line. So this area all up here, associated with the buffer zone, and also adjacent to these properties would be undeveloped unless for some reason somebody tried to go in and requested to expand, but under this current application, this is what's being proposed. We're also proposing a buffer along the, we'll call it the east side of the proposed building here, the 5,500 square foot commercial building. Down here, just to give you a point of reference, I guess there was a, maybe a dance studio at one point, but an old building here, with kind of a removed foundation and still a belly of what was left, or a dimple we'll call it, right in here, just to give you that point of reference. The stormwater basin for the project above is right here. This is the Great Woods subdivision, right here. These are budding, the back of budding residential lots. This specifically is a lot that's currently being constructed. If you're familiar with that, there's a house being constructed right here on that lot. And they kind of have an access way that they're using through the subject property. So with that, I'll switch to the layout. This shows the proposed layout, a little bit clearer with the striping and the directional arrows. So the idea is that on the bank site, we would come through with, we'd have a dual-purpose access point here, coming in with the opportunity to have a, a drive-through ATM teller window type of situation here. Obviously, that teller window is on the street side, so as far as any potential noise from the ATM, et cetera, you know, that would obviously be on the street side. There was a question, I believe, from one of the abutters about whether that would be 24 hours or not. Obviously, that would be up with the planning board. I guess most ATMs are probably 24 hours, but I'd have to confirm that. So I would expect that that would probably be the request for the ATM itself. Obviously, the bank hours, we're pretty familiar with those. I would expect that maybe on a Friday they're open till 6:00. I'm not sure what that would be. We have the requisite number of parking spaces. We don't have any more because we are trying to minimize our impacts because of the wetland resource area here. So we have the parking, we have the handicap accessible spaces directly adjacent to the proposed entrance. We have one here and we have two handicap spaces over here. Again, the requisite number of parking spaces. We do have a loading area also on this side with a dumpster location. We assume that the bank location would have very little refuse and that it's mostly paper and a lot of it has to be shredded. So that would be pretty much handled with the, the smaller, you can almost lift them with your hands, the receptacles that are, they're quite a bit small, so we're not talking about a dumpster in that particular location. Probably be one for the lunches for the, for the bank staff and then everything else is pretty much shredded and put into one of those other containers. So we, one, it was, it was, we didn't want to impact any more area and two, it just made sense with the bank. So we do have a dumpster here, curb cuts, as I had mentioned. Shaker Road, you can see that's a pretty straight shot here, plenty of site distance in either direction. This is the intersection that was spoken about. So McMahon Associates has conducted a traffic count immediately adjacent, or immediately based on this project. So it was just before, within, I believe, the last month. I can get you the date of, of the subcontractor's work. It was Innovative Data who pretty much does all of the traffic counts in the area for the different various traffic engineers that we work with. And they've provided a very detailed analysis of the intersection. They've provided a very detailed analysis of site distances, internal circulation, curb cuts, movements associated with our proposed project. So I urge you to take a look at that. I do have, I will just briefly comment on the summary because I think it's probably the meat of the matter. On page 30, if you wanted to note where you can, the cheat, you know, the cheat sheet is on page 30, the conclusions from the study. Based on the ITV latest publication, the proposed development has estimated the result in approximately 22 new vehicle trips, 13 entering and nine vehicles exiting, I'm sorry, nine vehicles exiting during weekday morning peak. Okay, so weekday morning peak is a total of 22 new trips. The approximate, there's approximately 48 new vehicle trips, 24 entering and 24 exiting during the weekday afternoon peak, so on the way home. And then 87 new vehicle trips entering, I'm sorry, 45 entering and 42 exiting vehicle trips during the Saturday midday peak hours. So different peak hours, obviously, during the week where people are going to and coming from, back from work. And then the weekend is more of a midday peak. With that, they're recommending, based on their thorough analysis, that there would be a timing adjustment to the signal, the signal at the intersection. So you'll be able to read about the details of that and pose any questions you have for us at that point. But we, but again, this is based on what this project would do and then they're also looking, most of this signal adjustment is based on timing and based on a build out. I think it's the 20, 20, I think it's the 2026 build out that really triggers that recommendation. This is also, as you may be aware, this is also identified as a, as an intersection that has crashes. Most of those crashes, believe it or not, if you, when you go through the report, are not during the peak hour. They're kind of throughout the day. I think there was a total, I forget the total number, I think I had it somewhere. I'll get into that, or I'll let the traffic engineer get into that. But it's something that they believe is based on the timing and they break down all the specifics of what the crashes are like, whether there was specific damage to property, injury, the whole deal. So it's all broken out, very, you know, in my opinion, very thorough. I'll make sure that the aerial photograph is updated. They probably just used the GIS system or, or a aerial photography, aerial photography that was not updated. As we're aware, that was built in the last couple of years, so a lot of this aerial data is not always updated. So with that, there was a few questions that I wanted to just address and just, you know, not part of this. So as the chair had mentioned, there's, this is not part of the Great Woods subdivision and there was a question about open space. I'd like to just briefly answer that. This is a plan of the, sorry, this is a plan of the Great Woods subdivision, I believe it's phase seven. This is north, okay? So Shaker Road is here, so if you're coming to the intersection, intersection's about where this north arrow is. So if you're heading north, here's Chestnut and Shaker Road. So this is the subject property that I've highlighted. This is Yorkshire Place that goes up into Great Woods and then this is Canterbury here. So with our site, this is a plan to show, there was some question about whether this plan was supposed to be dedicated to open space. Some of you may be more familiar with the proceedings prior to this definitive subdivision being approved and, and the process. I know that at one point, there was a preliminary plan that did show open space to be conveyed to the town, but that did not happen through the process. There's some meeting minutes that appear that the town may have not been interested. I can't speak to that, I don't know the details, but I can assure you, and, you know, Attorney Martin is here, we can assure you that the Davis's own us have the right to develop it, they've been paying taxes on it. There was actually proposals, I believe, made to them. I think one of the proposals was for the Girl Scouts, Attorney Martin could certainly speak to that. So this has been contemplated for development for quite some time and they've been playing, paying taxes on it for a significant amount of time. So we apologize, we don't, not necessarily us, but we're, we feel bad that there was some confusion with the abutters that, you know, they, I believe, some of them had told us that they believed this might not be developed or wouldn't be developed because they thought it was open space. So, you know, that, you know, obviously is, you know, frankly, it's, you know, it's not too good for them, but we understand and unfortunately, that's, you know, that seems to be the case, that they were confused that they thought this was going to be open space. I know that they also were told that it was wetlands and it couldn't be developed. Obviously, there are restrictions. That does not mean it can't be developed, we just have to meet the performance standards and if we can do that, obviously, that's something we'll have to work out with the Conservation Commission. There was also one other question that I think is important to make note of and put in the record. When we came with the Dunkin' Donuts proposal, there was some question about the zone line, okay? This is the zone line right here where my scale is going to be. So there, under my scale is, that's the zone line. So on this side of the zone, this is business A, okay? And on this side, it's, I believe, I forget, uh, residence A. I'm sorry, this is business and this is residence A, I have to clarify. So there was some question as to where setbacks and buffering had to be, whether it needed to be from the property line or whether it needed to be from the zone line. So there was some discussion with the previous planner and some discussion with this planner, so we did all request that there be a determination made. So back, August 30th of 2008, Kevin Duquette, your building inspector, issue ID 18.
18.
Yeah, thank you. August 30th, 2018, there was a letter, a memo from Kevin Duquette, which I'll, you know, quickly put into the record. You probably have a copy of it, but it does detail where that setback line is and basically it is at the property line. So we have the landscape buffer that's required and then our building setback. We meet all those specific requirements. So this is, we believe, a by right filing in the zoning district. There's no special permit required, so we would like to make sure that we're working with you to make sure we meet or exceed all of your standards, certainly get the traffic information that we're looking for based on this specific project. We could try to get some information on where that other project stands, but certainly the expansion of that project into this area is going to have a completely different scenario. The timeframe is a lot different and I would expect that the planning board would look for specific mitigation associated with that project as well.
Watch your feet by the, you got to follow.
Yep. So we do have a full drainage analysis and drainage plan that's been provided. I'm probably more than you already, so I won't go into the specifics, but two drainage basins here. We are, getting this reviewed, I'm sorry, the Mass DEP is taking a look at this and also I believe the DPW will be taking a look at this. I don't think they've had an opportunity quite yet. But we're essentially collecting all of the stormwater from the impervious here, running it through a bio retention basin with an overflow that goes into the existing drainage system here in the event of a catastrophic event. Same thing over here, impervious. We're picking up that impervious through a filter strip that runs into a bio retention basin. We're also picking up some foundation or some, I'm sorry, trench string behind the building and that's then running also to the same overflow of the drainage system. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have about the site.
Okay, before we get into that, as part of the public input, we've received correspondence. They asked that the correspondence be read into the record.
To the members of the Town of East Long Meadow Planning Board, my name is Teresa Revosa. My family and I live at 31 Windsor Lane in the Great Woods neighborhood of East Long Meadow. I'm writing today in regards to your discussion about the proposed development at 244 Shaker Road on April 16th. Unfortunately, and may I say oddly, the scheduling of this planning board meeting falls during school break and many impacted residents with school age children are not able to attend. My husband and I are not able to attend and we are deeply concerned about the impact of this project on our neighborhood and our town as a whole. We're requesting that this letter be read on my family's behalf and included in the record for your meeting. First and foremost, when we built here in 2008, we were verbally told that beyond the wetlands on the Shaker Road side of this development, the land would be green space and recreation area for the town to enjoy. Additionally, neighbors were given site plans that confirmed this statement. I'm attaching a copy of the official map that was distributed, which clearly states that this parcel was to be conveyed to the town for open space and recreation. This seems like a classic bait and switch move. Tell potential buyers that one of the benefits of building a house here is that they will live in close proximity to spaces with large parking lots. This is erroneous abuse of trusting buyers who were provided written confirmation in bait and switch move that should not be tolerated or allowed. Next, has the impact to traffic flow on Shaker Road, Chestnut Street been studied? When the prior proposal for this parcel was presented there, were a promise of providing an updated traffic study showing the impact of the development? Has this study been completed? Is it a matter of public record and can it be viewed by those that will be impacted prior to the decision? Residents of Great Woods already struggled at certain times of the day to exit out of our neighborhood on the Shaker Road due to the amount of traffic. We also already struggled with walking, running and biking to the biking trail that is parallel to Shaker Road as there is no sidewalks or crosswalk place in multiple businesses with a large parking lot outside. Our entrance is only going to compound the problem. Also, we are obviously very concerned about how this proposed project is going to impact the value of our property and my neighbors' properties. Having random business with varied hours will certainly decrease our property values. The town should be prepared for a slew of tax abatement requests and a decrease in property tax revenue from Great Woods Development if such a project is approved. Lastly, on a side note, what we are doing as a community to buy back and preserve our land for future generations. East Long Meadow is a beautiful town with land that can still be saved. Let us not wait until it is too late in every morsel of available land in the building or parking lot on it. Let us be a motto of a community preservation that our rural and even suburban towns can look to as a shining example we owe to ourselves and to our children. Sincerely, Teresa Revosa.
Is there any other correspondence, kind?
Yes.
Great to be a clerk, huh? Dear Ms. Browders, I am resident of the Great Woods in East Long Meadow. A letter has been circulated throughout our community for proposed bank and commercial building at assessors parcel ID 18-35-0. The residents of Great Woods do not feel it is the best interest of not only our neighborhood but also the town of East Long Meadow to approve this construction proposal. There are many locations in East Long Meadow currently empty that should be occupied prior to additional new construction. Examples are the former karate studio next to Mario's Restaurant, Pescual's former location, the Steakhouse former location, other great sites in Center Square, 296 North Main Street where the medical offices have moved out, and most recently Staples next to Big Y. East Long Meadow does not need further construction building, the land and buildings already sitting idle. Traffic concerns are also at issue. The intersection of Shaker Road and Chestnut is a nightmare, especially during traffic hours in the afternoon. Heading southbound on Shaker Road into the intersection, the traffic is often backed up through Shaker Bowl. The cross traffic of Chestnut Street is backed up from both east and west bowled bound flows. Coming from east and west, you go down a large hill which is difficult during bad weather. By adding a bank and a commercial business just south of the intersection is going to back things up further, especially for cars leaving the location and trying to head south on Shaker Road. The intersection of Yorkshire Place and Shaker Road is also a major traffic hazard. The intersection is currently without a light and making left turns out of Great Woods on the Shaker is difficult during the day. Addition of a new office and bank building will make the situation even more of an issue. Please reject the application submitted for development of parcel ID 18-35-0. For the good of the town and community, additional letters and attendance from Great Woods will be forthcoming.
You have several.
Is this the next one here? Over to the rest of them.
I have to use mine.
Okay. Do you want one of us to read the next one?
Wow. A lot of us is repetitive.
All right, all right.
Okay. Town of East Long Meadow Planning Board, my name is Roy Sitting, M.D., and I live at 159 Canterbury Circle in Great Woods neighborhood off of Shaker Road. As a property owner and taxpayer at East Long Meadow, I am asking that my letter be read aloud and included in the record for your meeting on April 16th, 2019, that will discuss the development of a parcel of land at 244 Shaker Road that abuts our neighborhood. I and many others concern neighbors could not attend in person and have to resort to letter-writing about this important issue due to the fact that the meeting was inexplicably scheduled during April school vacation. The fact that such a meeting discussing the development that will have a far-reaching impact on the neighborhood was scheduled when many affected residents and families with small children would be out of town is mystifying, and it will not silence the opinions of the concerned residents who will be impacted by this development. My concerns about the development of the parcel are multiple, with the first being the fact that we may not have moved here in the first place had we known a bank and office building would be adjacent to the entrance to the neighborhood. When we first built the neighborhood several years ago, there was talk of a parcel being left open for green space. While we were never provided a map of the area affected when we built, there are other residents who moved in prior to us that were. I've attached a copy of the official map that shows the comments that the parcel was to be conveyed to the town for open space and recreation. It seems as though the promise of having green space close to the neighborhood was an empty one, and that this has left many of us feeling duped into moving here. My concern involves traffic. At prior planning board meetings, when the building of a Dunkin' Donut on the land was proposed, there was a promise of providing an updated traffic study showing the impact of the development. Has this study been done, and if so, can we review it before any decisions are made on the development? As a result, I know firsthand the negative impact of the current traffic flow when trying to exit out of the neighborhood on the Shaker Road. Turning left or right has become increasingly challenging, and I am concerned that having businesses so close to the entrance of Great Woods will draw increased traffic and make it even harder to exit the neighborhood safely. My third concern is the impact that business will have on the overall quality of the life of the neighbors who are close by. I assume that the bank proposed will have an ATM that will be open 24 hours. The noise associated with having cars drive up to an ATM at all hours of the day and night will be negative impact, impact the quality of life of the neighbors who abut the property, and will certainly affect their enjoyment of the property, not to mention the fact that there are no details available for the building proposed for the site. How tall it would be, will the windows in the building be at eye level, will the houses that abut effectively allowing the people to look directly to the windows of the houses that abut the property? My last concern is the negative impact on the value of my property and the property of other residents of Great Woods should this development be allowed to proceed. Having random business in the office building so close to the neighborhood will certainly decrease the overall property values of the neighborhood. The decrease in overall values of our homes will negatively impact property tax revenues to the town when requests come from each resident for abatements of their property values. Rest assured, those requests will be forthcoming. In closing, I have expressed my dissatisfaction that this meeting was scheduled when many affected residents are away and have outlined my concerns about this impact that this development will have on our neighborhood. I ask that you consider keeping to the comment on the map provided with this letter that stated the parcel would be conveyed to the town for open space and recreation and not approve development for a parcel. Thank you. Roy Sitting, M.D.
Johnny, want to take over?
Yeah. Dear Planning Board Committee, due to the meeting being during school vacation week, this resident is unable to attend the meeting. He attended a few meetings where the agenda item regarding parcel 244 in the past was changed and was unable to voice his concerns. Again, the meeting regarding development for this parcel comes, but now during a time when he is out of town. Below is a presentation he would like read by a committee member at the meeting and put on record for the meeting, April 14th, 2019. He will again attend to speak in person on this issue. However, due to the conflict, he requested his words be read aloud and recorded on record for the community to hear during your hearing on April 14th, 2019, during the time allowed for citizens to comment regarding the agenda item referencing 2444 Shaker Road and any development requests for that parcel. Words from a nine-year-old resident in the Great Woods neighborhood. Good evening. My name is Carter Sitting. I am a nine-year-old resident of East Long Meadow, and I live in Great Woods. My address is 159 Canterbury Circle. I am representing myself and my neighborhood. I would be standing in front of you reading this in person tonight, but Mr. Martin requested this meeting during my school's spring break vacation week. He knew many of my neighbors may be gone. That was a very clever strategy from him. Perhaps he didn't want to face a nine-year-old in person speaking to him. I am here to ask that you strongly consider voting no to adding a bank and business to the property of 244 Shaker Road. I have lived in this neighborhood since I was one-year-old. My parents put their life savings into building our home in this town. We moved here from Springfield, but this is the only home I remember living in, and now I am worried that we will move and leave East Long Meadow. We already have concerns with the situation at the high school for its condition and academics falling behind other newer schools. Now we have the man who sold us our land to build on ruining our neighborhood by wanting to build businesses in front of our neighborhood, creating an unsafe environment. My parents are not from this state and would love to go back home in Maryland, but East Long Meadow is my home. Taking down trees and ruining the backyard of my friends just to add more business space when there are empty buildings in the places in town doesn't make sense to me. Why can't you use other spaces for offices and a new bank? The traffic is already bad enough for my bus driver, Mr. Herb, to turn. Adding more cars traffic will make it more difficult to turn out of our neighborhood and make it unsafe for kids in our neighborhood. Many of my friends like to go on the bike path. Adding more cars will make it more dangerous to cross Shaker Road to get to the bike path. The traffic will be worse and dangerous. When my parents take me to swim practice and music lessons, it's already difficult to turn onto Shaker Road because of the traffic. I think if you add a bank and offices in front of our neighborhood, things will only get worse. The environment and beauty of Great Woods and East Long Meadow will be destroyed, too. In our neighborhood, there are many trees that provide a nice place for nature and wildlife. There are many deer and birds that live here. If the Davis Group decides to build and remove many of the natural barrier trees in front of the neighborhood, many of those animals won't have a home anymore. How can they guarantee that East Long Meadow will stay clean, welcoming, and safe? I am here to ask that you please vote no on changing the neighborhood. Why do they have to build something totally new in a neighborhood area ruining the beauty of what I call my hometown? I am asking that this planning board to please vote no when considering the requests from the Davis family Sevad to build a bank and offices in front of my neighborhood. They told us and our neighbors this would remain a green space and wetlands years ago when many of us moved in. They were not honest. I will come in person to read this again if this hearing for vote is delayed. Thank you for your time. Carter Sitting.
There's one more.
Dear members of the planning board, I am writing this letter to share with you my concerns regarding the hearing that is scheduled for April 16th, 2019, ostensibly during the middle of school vacation week. The subject matter of this hearing includes a request by the Sevad Trust Group to build on parcel 244 Shaker Road. As a tax-paying resident, I ask that you please read this letter during your planning board meeting since I am unable to attend and would like my concerns read and recorded into the record. My name is Darlene Reese Sitting, and I live at 159 Canterbury Circle. My family built and moved into our home in May of 2010. When we moved into our home, we were never told that there would be a developed commercial property placed in front of the Great Woods neighborhood by the developer Sevad Trust. In fact, we had two separate closings, one with Rulier Builders and one with Sevad Trust, since we had to purchase the land directly from the Sevad Trust, also known as the Davis Brothers. And during both closings, there was no mention that Sevad Trust was planning to develop commercially in front of this neighborhood. In fact, we were told the neighborhood was surrounded by wetlands properties. I'm sure you can imagine how we, as neighbors, feel we were duped by the Davis Brothers developer. My questions and comments for the members of the planning board are as follows. As the developer and his representation requesting to build a parcel 244 Shaker Road presented an updated traffic study, this was previously requested when Mr. Martin came before you with the Solomar Development Group seeking to build the Dunkin' Donuts last summer. Since then, we still have not seen the results of the traffic study. As resident of Great Woods, I find it interesting how Mr. Martin is coming to you as the attorney again, but this time for a different client, who happens to be the landowner. It's a developer under the name Sevad Trust. Either way, Mr. Martin has been asked for the updated traffic study information, and yet he has not responded with the requested information ever. We, as neighbors in Great Woods, deserve access to that information before any such vote should occur to move forward on this project. The community and planning board deserve to see the impacts from a current traffic study. That includes the gas station operating. To fully evaluate what the impacts of a bank on the opposite side of Shaker Road could do to the flow of traffic, I presume such bank would include a drive-through operation with a 24-hour ATM. Such functions would, again, have a drastic change in the dynamics of the traffic flow on Shaker Road that is already a congested area during peak school and work hours. Holiday terms are exceptionally challenging with Laflourentine Bakery requiring a police officer to direct traffic. There should be a full evaluation of the traffic flow with the current conditions, school and gas station operating, to determine the best course of action before voting on a new element that will impact the flow of traffic. Residents and the planning board deserve this information to make an informed decision. If this developer is looking to move forward and the planning board is willing to vote, are there considerations for safe crossing? Bringing banks and other businesses to a neighborhood property line also poses safety concerns. There are many neighbors with children who are using the bike path in town. Additionally, to the point above, there is a big concern for safety around this project. Is the Sevad Trust as a developer going to be held responsible for any incident if something happens at this dangerous intersection if there are not safety considerations evaluated? Clearly, we residents are concerned that development on that parcel will increase traffic, which could then create an unsafe situation for our neighbors and town residents who access the bike path and walk to town through that intersection. This could cause a dire need for sidewalks, safe lighting, and crosswalks, and as such, should be considered a critical component to any proposed project for that parcel. What is the plan for the office space? Who is the intended tenant? What sort of operation will be going on in our neighborhood? What sort of traffic will that business bring to Shaker Road? What will the building look like? What protections will be in place for neighbors? How high will the building be built? What is the plan for masking the roof and the industrial equipment AC unit on the roof? What is the plan for landscaping and lighting around the area? How will lighting impact on our neighbor's properties? Is there a sound barrier considered in this project? If not, what is the plan to minimize all noise affecting the neighborhood? In closing, there are many Great Woods neighbors with backyards that abut the proposed commercial parcel, who were told their lots were abutting wetlands. As we have organized, we learned many of our neighbors were given a map when we first built, and were shown that parcel 244 was part of an area designated to be donated to the Town of East Long Meadow as green space. Attached is a map that many neighbors received when they closed from the builder. Clearly, those of us that built strongly feel we were all lied to by both the Davis Brothers, also known as the Sevad Trust, represented by Mr. Martin and Dan Rulier Builders. We feel the members of the planning board deserve to see this map and should know our concerns. We ask that you consider our perspective before voting to continue with this project. Please know that it's neighbors. No matter how Mr. Martin tries to schedule around vacation times or make things inconvenient, we plan to follow every aspect of this project. If the town votes to move it forward, we plan to be present expressing our concerns every step of the process. We will make sure the region is aware of the dishonest, deceptive, and untrustworthy communications presented by the Sevad Trust organization when we purchased our lands from them. They will be held accountable for being the developer of Great Woods, as Mr. Martin stated on the record in June of 2018 at your meeting. Thank you for your time. Darlene Reese Sitting.
Did I don't get it?
I think that.
Okay. As you've heard, we did get the traffic study today. It is available electronically in PDF format, and anyone who wants to have a look at it, it's a public document, call the office if they want to get it, or email the office. And Connie's email address is on the town website, so if you want to get a copy of this, the easiest way to do it would be to email her, and we will send you the PDF, and you can read all 30 pages of it at your convenience. A lot of questions have been raised, and I hope that in the continuation of this hearing, which will be on the 21st of May, that some of these questions will be addressed by the developer, now that you've heard them. And at this point, then, what we will do is open this up to comments from the public, and after that, we will take it back to the board for additional questions, and then we will continue the hearing to May 21st. Okay, so those people, primarily because we have not gotten a ruling from Conservation, so we don't know if this is the final plan or not, and secondly, so the board can have time to digest the traffic study, and we still don't not have comments, I believe, from D P W or the Public Safety, and we obviously need comments from the Police Department because of issues that have been raised, and we have to rely on their expertise in areas of public safety. Having said that, I'll open it up to the public, and I would ask that you express yourselves, but please try not to be overly redundant for what's already been said.
Hi again. Marilyn Richards, 342 Pinehurst. If I may, George, I'd like to direct some questions to Rob Lebeck.
Please direct them to the chair.
Through the chair, okay. Rob, you pointed out in your previous explanation where the property lines are, where the zone line is, and my understanding is that the buffer will start at the property line, and that's the buffer. The buffer I'm talking about is above the commercial building.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, it's 25 feet?
25 feet, twelve and a half of it has to be wooded.
Right, right, okay. I understood from Rob's presentation, I thought I heard that right now the bank building was where it was going to be. However, if there was any reason to expand later on, that there might be an option to do that, did I understand that correctly?
I think he overstated himself there. The residential zone line is not moving, okay? I think we demonstrated last summer that there is no will in the town to move the residential zone line. Please.
Yeah, so if I could just clarify my statement. I didn't want to misspeak because I think it's important to be accurate. These folks in the audience are abutters, certainly will be living there for a long period of time. Under the current proposal, as Mr. Kingston has mentioned, we can, or any proposal, we, right now, cannot put a building beyond the zoning line. However, if for some reason somebody came a couple of years, say the bank said, "There's too much shade on our roof," or some, who knows what could come up, right, and they went to the Conservation Commission and said, "I would like to, you know, clear an additional 10 feet towards the neighbor's property," I suppose that could be a request. They might get denied, they might get denied, if it was something that was subject to the planning board review. I just wanted to make it clear that right now, the proposal before you is planning to leave all of the buffer that I had shown in the green. I just wanted to be clear that somebody could request, it's not a protected open space, somebody could request to do something in there at some point. We don't have any intentions at this point, and I wouldn't anticipate that, but I wanted to be accurate.
Thank you.
Okay, I was just wanting to confirm, and actually, the chairman made it pretty clear that business use was not going to encroach further into the residential zone.
That's accurate, yeah.
Okay, one other issue, and I made a mistake. I had received some calls from neighbors, and I read the notice, and I read commercial building, and I'm thinking commercial zone. I'm thinking business offices, I'm thinking that type of use, and so, I don't know, I can't remember how it was described, a convenience, some sort of retail.
It's retail. Yeah, the zone is business.
Oh, I understand that, I understand that, but they could have put that type of building there if they wanted to, but my mistake- But that, my mistake. But that being said, the topography, I know we don't know what the building is going to look like, but I think there's some very valid concerns about the homeowners who have spent a great deal of money purchasing property from the same people that are now developing this property. And a two-story structure, the way the topography is, may lend itself to create some additional nuisance issues for the residents who live there. Now, I was an outspoken former planning board member with the Dunkin' Donuts project, and I had some real concerns about the proposed zone change. That's history. But a comment was made to me by a proponent of the project saying that, "I can't understand why people who live in that area should be concerned about this when they purchased homes that look down on Tyler Equipment." And I think that, you know, we all buy homes because, you know, there are specific pieces of information that we take into consideration. And yes, we may buy a home that deals with a certain nuisance issues, but I don't think because you buy a one nuisance issue, does anyone have the right to just suddenly throw additional nuisance issues at your property? These folks have beautiful neighborhoods, and I've walked them and spoken to them because they've invited me. And I understand the right of the developer to develop his property, but I do feel that there are some issues that need to be taken into consideration. Last comment, if there's a convenience store or a use like that at that location, it will be a magnet for the kids that live in that neighborhood. And there has to be a sidewalk from Yorkshire to Chestnut, so they can safely go and get whatever they get, their smoothies or whatever. We see the kids throughout town, and that would be a magnet if that becomes the use. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Can I just respond quickly? The proposal is for single-story buildings. The parking calculation, we are maxed, so we cannot go vertical, so there will not be two stories.
Thank you. Anyone else care to comment or question? Please come forward, identify yourself.
My name is Brian Murphy. I live at 195 Canterbury Circle. I believe I addressed this committee last time. We had a meeting about last, I think it was midsummer.
Yeah.
And in that meeting, it was basically, the attitude was buy everywhere for the homeowners that purchased properties in Great Woods. Again, what I would ask of all of you is to put yourselves in our shoes. We were told that that land would not be developed. And I don't know if it's misleading sales practices, but it sure seems like something very shady is going on here. Now, if they were going to change what their original plan showed, which one of the homeowners who purchased their land in 2003 was provided, wouldn't it be their obligation to provide every homeowner since that time with an updated map saying, "Oh, yes, well, we are going to develop this land"? No, in fact, they told us the opposite. They told us it would not be developed, and that it was wetlands. So again, put yourselves in our shoes. What recourse do we have in this situation? I can assure you, we would not have purchased our home if we were given correct information. Second, when it comes to traffic, this street is backlogged every day when I'm trying to get home from work, and you're saying you're going to put in two new businesses here. Safety concerns. And thirdly, what is the correct buffer, amount of buffer zone to be close to wetlands? As it stands right now?
That's a Conservation Commission issue, and we should take that up. They're going to be hearing this. What's the date?
I believe it's continued for two meetings.
So that would be?
Do you remember?
24th, I believe.
24th of April?
April.
Okay, 24th of April. Wetlands issues will be before Conservation, and we don't deal with wetlands issues. One of the reasons we're continuing is we don't deal with wetlands issues. They need to come up with their final approved orders of condition so that the developer knows that the plan he presents to us is the final plan, okay? I mean, basically, if they told them, "No, we need 6 more feet of buffer," this plan will change, and we will have to go back to, we have to go back to the drawing board. So we can't close this hearing until that's completed.
With all the peripherals going on in this situation, with all the information that you have, everything here, when does it become enough to just say, "This is a bad idea"? That's what I'm asking of you.
As I say.
And again, I must say, I know this is not your place to overhear the sales practices of what we were told, but this whole development, we were all sold a bill of goods, and I am disgusted by the sales practices of this man's, whoever hired you. How they can actually live with themselves doing what they did is beyond.
Don't get personal on this.
I'm trying not to be personal, but again, put yourselves in our shoes. This is not a small thing. We did not go into this blindly. We asked the right questions. We were provided with bogus information.
We get the point, okay?
I did not mean to offend you.
As I pointed out at the start of this meeting, okay, this is a site plan review hearing.
Correct.
Okay? The owner of the site has the right to put certain things on there, provided they meet the standards that are laid out in the zoning bylaw. And the zoning bylaw is available online on the website, the town website, if you want to go in there. It's Chapter 7, where site plan review is laid out and what the standards are. Our job is to determine whether or not the plan that's presented to us meets those standards, okay? And for that, we rely also on the advice of DPW, in this case, the police department, because they're the public safety experts. Okay, I'm not an expert on public safety or traffic. That's, we got a police officer, who is that?
Understood.
So we need to get their input on it.
Understood.
But it comes down to the standards that are in the bylaw, and it's going to be our judgment as to whether or not the project meets those standards.
There are so many red flags in this project, but what I'm asking of you is to consider otherwise. Not only for my benefit, but the whole, all of our neighbors.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to the board?
Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. One of my concerns here with the site plan is the entrance and exit on the hill on Chestnut Street. Has the developer considered doing like what was done at the Long Meadow Line campus style between the two buildings so that the entry and exit can come out where the second building is on Shaker Road? To come out on a flat area to where you can see both directions seems to make a lot more sense than to try and exit where there's a hill, and any traffic coming down the hill is pretty much blind to it. I just wasn't sure if they've even considered that as an aspect. I know there's wetlands in between. I was at the Conservation Committee meeting, but there is a clay pipe right now that comes down there. If there's already piping, then the possibility of changing that to a permanent pipe, having the driveway come across and exit on Shaker Road would make it a lot more sensible, it would seem. And my only other question was, as far as the parking area, if we don't know what's going in, do we use the maximum amount of spots for the busiest type of building?
We have a parking formula based on square footage of the building.
Based on use, also.
Use and square footage, yes.
Well, if we don't know the use.
The use is going to be retail, we've been told that.
Well, I guess that's my question, is the retail the largest that it could be? In other words, the number of spaces, six per thousand would be retail, I believe.
I'd have to recheck the bylaw, I don't remember all the numbers.
Because without the exact what's going in there, it can change. And I'm just, like they said, I mean, there's the possibility of saying, "Hey, we're going to do this," and then something else goes in because of market conditions or something.
Well, we need to make sure it's specified on the site plan itself, what is going to be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to address the issue?
Yeah, I'd like to answer and try to clarify for the folks in the audience at least a couple of the comments that were made. First off, this meeting was scheduled based on me, so I know Mr. Martin has been thrown under the bus. We would have been here probably two weeks ago if I had hit the first deadline I was trying to hit with my staff, but if I was as cunning as these folks made Mr. Martin out to be, I would probably be done already. But the reality is, this was not scheduled for anybody going away, a nine-year-old kid seems like a great little kid and writes very well, so kudos to him. But that said, we certainly expected multiple meetings, so there's no way to avoid abutters. No one goes on vacation for, you know, multiple weeks at a time, so, you know, we fully expect it to come back. So it's not Mr. Martin's fault. And as far as the open space question, when somebody buys a property, we're all aware, you close on a property, you're provided with a subdivision plan, you're provided with a plan for your subproperty. It would very specifically have been the plan that's been recorded at the Registry of Deeds, which I went and pulled up after the Conservation Commission meeting when the claim was made about the open space. There was, in fact, discussions, and I wasn't here, I was probably in high school at the time, but the planning board did discuss that with the builder and developer. So at one point, when people early on were looking at it, but certainly when Phase 7 was done on the subdivision, it was still being contemplated. I think you've probably seen some of the meeting minutes as we have. I want to thank the planner for sending those over. But with that, we understand the frustration, but no one can say, no one's going to develop a property that they don't own, because they don't own it.
Could you address the question about the campus style, putting, not connecting?
Yeah, that's a great question, and actually, as you're aware, we were involved on the one with the corner of Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, with Mr. Crowley and Berkshire. In this particular location, there was a couple of reasons why we did not connect them, because actually, I could probably show you an old layout that we looked at. One of them was that we needed a place for the stormwater basin. Initially, we would have loved to do a subsurface drainage system, okay? Seasonal high groundwater dictates a lot of times whether or not we can put a subsurface drainage system in, because it goes under the parking lot, and if you think of the cross-section from the parking lot, then you need cover over the system, then you need the system itself, and then from the bottom of the system, which is similar to like a septic system, just to give you some perspective, there's a two-foot separation requirement under the DEP regulation, stormwater standards. So we could not put a subsurface drainage system here because seasonal high groundwater. As you can imagine, there's a wetland here, groundwater is not that deep. We were able to achieve the two-foot separation for a surface basin, so we have a bioretention basin here, and we have a bioretention basin here. We also, at one point, because we were trying to potentially salvage a connection here, because it seemed like a good idea to us, too, the other reason was that we could not eliminate this, and we even looked at cascading and doing a larger basin down here, cascading the water basically through the drainage system and down to this point, but the elevations just didn't work. It didn't, obviously, water flows downhill. If it wasn't holy water, we weren't getting it there. So that is why we didn't do that. Plus, it would further the impacts to the buffer zone. Granted, and this is something that came up with the Conservation Commission, I know it's a conservation issue, but this is, if there's ever been a low-quality wetland, this is it, okay? There's some DEP comments about canopy and our proximity to the wetland resource area. I know there's no such thing as a bad wetland, however, in this particular case, this is riddled with bittersweet, any mature vegetation that's anywhere adjacent to the wetland is being choked out by the bittersweet and the other invasives. Significant, you've probably seen along the edge, a lot of stag corn, sumac here, a lot of, you know, call it secondary successional vegetation, not a lot of canopy on the south side, much more in more hardwoods in this area, and then also up in the back that's, you know, ideally going to never be touched. But with this particular location, we didn't want to impact any more than we needed to. There is, as Mr. Ralph, sorry. Paige. Paige, Ralph, sorry. Mr. Page's comment about an existing storm drain here, there is. And what happened was, and I think a lot of reason the wetland was created, was because that clay pipe was partially crushed. It is not crushed now. Right now, it is flowing pretty nicely through there, and again, that goes to the drainage system. So, sorry to get ramble on in there. The police department, we'll certainly communicate with them. The comment red flags has been brought up. So I just want to put this in perspective. You know, when I look at a site plan, I look at what the requirements are, I provide a design that we believe meets the safety standards and meets the requirements of the zoning district. So we understand that the neighbors have a concern, but that is not necessarily germane to the site plan approval, other than for the site itself. You know, their understanding of what they bought and what open space was is actually part of the proceeding for the subdivision. Perhaps that's another, there's another venue or another day or another hearing for that. But this property is owned by the Davis family. We're looking to develop it in keeping with your regulations. We believe we are meeting all of your regulations as far as a buy rate filing is concerned. We have the curb cuts, we think they're reasonable. We did eliminate, Ralph, I'm sorry, we did eliminate a curb cut here, and that was due to the elevation change. We have a curb cut up on the corner, and we were originally preparing one here. So if anything, we actually eliminated a curb cut here through the design process just because of grades. The grade didn't work, we had to choose one or the other. It made sense to try not to lower this site because of the groundwater again. So that was kind of, this is raised a little bit, and then we can accommodate that entrance here. So with that, we are a buy rate filing. I would be happy to investigate any, if there's any questions or comments related to traffic, I will certainly relay those to, I will relay the comment on the aerial photograph. I do want to clarify, though, from a traffic point of view, sorry, that we are studying the current proposal. The other proposal that was discussed, my understanding is it's not currently zoned for that yet. Ideally, it does become that. And, but that may or may not, you know, that could become anything. It could become tennis courts. We don't know what's going on there. It's been there for probably 20 or 30 years. Is that something that we are required, and I'm just kind of asking the chair, is that something we're required to study through this process? Because I feel like this is, you know, we want to study ours, make sure that you're satisfied, make any mitigation efforts that are required, and then obviously, that would be treated separately and, you know, I guess added to the mix if that does come to fruition.
What we're looking for in your traffic study is the impact of your proposal on the existing traffic. Okay? I think the objection was that, just the wording in the traffic report that said, "No other development is foreseen in the area," or something to that effect, I don't remember the exact words, which is inaccurate, okay?
I know they did look at a 2026 build-out scenario, which takes, I'm going to call it, you know, standard ITE practices for, you know, future development. That gets kind of thrown into the soup of their report.
Yeah.
You know, they certainly would not have, and probably will not anticipate a 600-unit or 300-unit or 50-unit project down the street that we don't, you know, can't determine at this point. But they will absolutely, I'll make sure that everything's been addressed with the gas station across the street, and then a standard build-out scenario, we can look at, if you look at the 2020 build-out, 2026 future build-out scenario, I think that takes that into consideration.
I've looked at a lot of build-outs from a lot of different places, and they're all very speculative.
Exactly, and that's kind of the point, yeah.
Any other comments or questions for the floor? Please come up and identify yourself.
Hi, Craig Jernstrom, 799 Parker Street. This originally happened before my time on the Conservation Commission. What I was just wondering is if we're sure that this land was never offered to the town? Because, and just in my humble opinion, it's a borderline one for if we want it on the Conservation Commission. It's definitely not one of those ones that's a slam dunk that we definitely want it. And so I was just wondering if we were sure about that.
You need to remember that at the time, we were under a Board of Selectment, and the only body that could accept land was the Board of Selectment. They deferred to both, they defer, they asked both Conservation, Recreation, and, Conservation and Recreation, basically, whether or not, and DPW, okay, whether or not they ought to accept the land. DPW was concerned that the land included the detention basins, and at that time, the Board of Public Works was dead-set against accepting any detention basin, no matter what guarantee. what guarantees came with it. And I do, I can't speak definitively, I was involved at the time, but it's been a long time. But I think that that was the deal-breaker at the time, and the town never did accept it, okay? And yet, we're under the Board of Selectment, which was not as transparent as what we have now, shall we say? And I really can't comment on why it wasn't accepted, in the end, because that decision was made by people other than myself.
But so then, it was offered, though, to the town?
There were discussions, I'll put it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am.
Hi, Christina Holmes, 181 Canterbury Circle. I live on the, on the top end of Chestnut.
Okay.
I can tell you that, first thing is, I'm just worried about our quality of life being really impacted. And also, I know this traffic study, and I will look at that as well, but the entrance on Chestnut Street, we hear accidents all the time there, mostly coming from down Chestnut to the intersection. And we were also told that when we bought our lot, I'm really not sure if we were told that there was going to be some building down there, I'm not sure if we would have bought our lot. There was other lots available in the neighborhood. We, they told us that it was really unusable space.
Drainage space.
Because of the size of the parcel, so, and the wetlands. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please.
Hi, Karen Murphy, 195 Canterbury. I live next to the house that's being built. I guess my concern amongst everything else that's already been spoken today is, that's my backyard. So you're going to put a convenience store in there, it could be open until 11:00, and you're going to have drunk kids who can walk right into my backyard. So the cops can expect a bunch of phone calls every night to protect me, and I will not feel safe. We lived in Springfield. We moved to East Long Meadow to give my son a backyard, a place to play. I don't want him to play in the backyard anymore. I don't feel safe with this in my backyard. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
It would be great if you could put those comments in an email to both us and the police department.
Okay.
So that when they comment on the public safety aspects of this, they have that comment.
Okay.
Anyone else? Mr. Page.
Sorry, just a quick follow-up.
Ralph Page.
Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. You just said that there's going to be an increase in the elevation at the corner, instead of dropping down on the hill for the building that's right on the corner. So what are we looking at? Are you looking at a retaining wall that's going to go in there, or are you just looking at a slope?
Through the chair, please. It's proposed as a slope, but it certainly could be a small retaining wall. It's pretty far back from the corner, but right now, it's just a slope. And again, it's just an earthen slope back like it is now. The grade, as you're probably aware, climbs at the corner pretty quickly. So we're basically just a little bit of fill in front, kind of cutting the back and then tying in on Chestnut. But there's a grade, just to give you some perspect, ooh, boy, I messed your computer up. Perspective, we're, you know, the elevation is about 228. It's about a 10-foot, 9-foot grade change from the front of the site, from the road here to the road up here. So we're just compensating for that grade change with our grading. You know, all the parking lot grading is, is pretty much under 5%, as would be typical, good design practice. Our handicap spaces are all right around, are just under 2% cross-slope in either direction. And then we have 3:1 or greater, you know, 4:1, 5:1 slopes as they are running away from the parking lot area, and those are earthen grass slopes.
So the height of the actual hill, you're probably looking, the mound in front, six, seven feet, and then it levels out where the building is, and then where the driveway, or is it just the land's sloped?
What's the change in elevation from your base to the parking lot?
From, from our, from here to our parking lot?
Yeah.
We're about 226 to about 230, so roughly four feet, which is pretty much what, pretty much what existing is. We're at, we're not really raising it, we're just kind of adjusting. So we're 231 here, the existing grade is 230. So, you know, the parking lot's a foot higher than existing grade, so not a lot different.
Obviously, the reason for the question is, if you come down Chestnut Street and stop at the light, right now, it's super difficult to look bad, even though they allow a right-hand turn, you can't see traffic coming, and that's why I was concerned if they're building up the hill more, it's going to be even less visible to see it. Thank you.
Any other comments from the floor?
Just one more question.
Yes.
So just now, your proposed bank, is that, could that be changed in a later time, or is that what it would be?
So we're proposing a bank, so under the, if this does get approved, under the approval, we would be allowed to do a bank, because all of our parking and the footprint is all based on a bank footprint. In the event that they wanted to try to fit it, so let's just say somebody came along and wanted to put a different use there, we would have to go back before the planning board and request approval, just like we're doing today.
Okay.
To clarify, it is a business zone.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And therefore, anything that's allowed in a business zone that can provide sufficient parking, okay? You know, who knows what's going to happen 20, 30 years from now? You know, we can't guarantee this can be a bank there in perpetuity. So you need to consider it a business zone, and the issue, as they pointed out several times, is it's a small footprint, so you don't have a lot of parking. You probably don't have enough parking there for a restaurant, okay? But people have taken banks and turned them into metal offices. They do all kinds of crazy stuff.
Right. I don't know how, like, I'm a nurse, I don't, I don't know this kind of stuff, like, it's very well-prepared. But I, you know, I'm, if you're sick, I'm your girl.
Yeah.
But anyway, I'm just, I just was curious if it was just going to be definitely a bank, or like, how it worked with, you know?
I could, through the chair, I can answer that. So this is a, they do not have a current tenant for the bank space, they do not have a current tenant for the commercial space. I think it's important to note, I think everybody's getting stuck on the word convenience. I'd like to restate that as retail. I use the term convenience because it's not your typical big box or even a small box place. It's something where it's going to be more neighborhood-based, not necessarily a convenience store, so to speak. I think that's important, and certainly, you know, if that's a concern of the neighbors, I'm sure that they will look, they're going to look for the best tenants they can find, obviously.
We do have a convenience store within 200 feet of it, right across the intersection.
Yeah, exactly.
So, but that's a marketing issue that the owners need to deal with, that's something we deal with here.
Yeah.
Okay. They have to decide what makes sense, what they can lease.
I just was, I just, because I last just wanted to say that, I feel like East Long Meadow has a ton of banks, and I don't really know why we'd need another one. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Nick, 203, 283 North Main Street. So the traffic going from La Florentine to the convenience store across the street is already an issue, so throwing another spot into the mix, I don't know how you're going to do it. And plus, the people that live in Great Woods, I know they spent a lot of money on those lots, and I know they spent a lot of money to build their, their homes, and I'm sure they're raising a family, and I'm sure they don't want to look at a, whatever is going to go there. I mean, I know you just put a bank, there's a bank over where Bentley's is, the plants also built their building there, you built that gas station with the convenience store, La Florentine is in there, and I know that traffic trying to get out of there is very, very tough. I know a lot of landscapers in town use that gas station because it's easier for them with their trailers. So I know it's a common spot for big trucks. And I know what Mr. Page was saying about with the grade, coming around that corner is very, very hard to see over, and I think it'll make it even more hard. So I just, just to consider all thoughts.
Yeah, thank you. At this point, I'll take it back to the board.
I just have one comment. I appreciate your, your comments about having too many of one type of business in town. Unfortunately, that's not something the town can regulate, but I don't know how many more banks, how many more hairdressers, how many more nail salons, how many more restaurants. You'd love to see for a vibrant economy, a good diversity of types of businesses, but unfortunately, this board cannot regulate that.
I just wanted to say it.
Yeah, thank you.
I want to say it aloud, for a lot of people think that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board at this point? Anything that you would like particularly to be prepared to answer when they come back in on the 21st?
I was just curious, these meeting minutes have been sort of referenced, there was just one sentence that kind of popped out to me. They said, regarding putting in possibly the soccer fields or baseball fields, but obviously, that's not going to happen. They said, however, there was a problem with parking because the Conservation Commission didn't want to have cars parking next to the wetlands. So I'm almost, I know there's probably different members of Conservation Commission now, but I'm just curious, has there already been sort of a decision made that it's, they're not comfortable with parking being so close to the well now? So that would be kind of a...
Well, the minutes of the meeting indicate from April of 2004 that the DPW, as you correctly recall, voiced opposition to the acceptance of the land. They didn't want to have to take care of another basin, they said it was impractical to take for uses recreational fields because of positioning things practically for the fields and then, you know, accommodating parking as well. So although there's been a lot of statements made, which I'm trying to remain neutral about, the fact of the matter is that the minutes reflect that there was a discussion about this at the town, and that the town representatives rejected it for that purpose. If you go through further in these minutes, you'll see that there is also discussion by planning board members about, a planning board member said at the beginning of this project, there was talk about the Davis family building a YMCA or donating a town building, and they offered the land to the town, and the town said no. So I'm concerned that my client is being unfairly painted in a light that the minutes and facts do not support. They did do what they said they would do when it came time to have the subdivision approved, as it says later on in the minutes. This plan was approved without that commentary, and that was recorded and approved. And there's a discussion of that in here as well. So I invite you to review those minutes and anyone else, their public record, but they absolutely addressed the issues and answered the chairman of the Conservation Commission, the land was offered, and it was not accepted, so.
My concern mostly just was that the Conservation Commission, it sounded like, wasn't totally on board with the idea of having cars parking next to the wetland.
Well, parking on the field is the way I read it. So you're going to have a soccer field, you're going to pull up, you're going to be trampling in, you know, they, it doesn't sound like that they were in support of that. That doesn't mean they're not supportive, supporting parking properly. That's how I read it.
The other thing I just wanted to add, just a brief comment, there's been obviously a lot of discussion about the way this meeting has been set. There was no back, you know, back-room type of deal to set it on a specific date, you know, and I, I think, and I can, I can't speak for the rest of my board, but I, you know, read these comments at a time. I appreciate, you know, people, you know, I wish there was, you know, a ton of people at every one of our meetings, you know, concerned citizens coming, but there's just no, you know, there's no reasoning or specific reasoning behind why we did it, you know, at this specific date. Unfortunately, it just sort of fell that way, but I'm happy that, you know, there will be, I'm sure, a continuation of this discussion, and people are, you know, more than invited to come and discuss their concerns, and, you know, we, at least I, take them into account significantly, so.
Well, I appreciate that, because apparently, I was cast as the wizard trying to move this around, but I will tell you that, first of all, Rob knows, I pushed him on behalf of my client for five versions of a campus, and he kept asking for more time and pushing it out, and we determined that it couldn't be, and he said, the plans are ready, I said, file them, let's get on the next available meeting, and that's what we did.
Appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, just one last thing I would like us to be prepared for.
Yes.
Just as an answer for both sides, those residents from Great Woods and the petitioners, that in the event that this board rules one way or the other, what options are available to appeal any decision of the board?
Yeah, I mean, we will...
So that we can make that
Right.
...available to people, because they'll want to know what's the next potential step?
We will have that available at the next meeting. I don't want to speak off the top of my head, because I need to review, there are many different steps, okay? Most of which end up in land court.
But just so people are aware
Yeah.
...that there is a next step if it's, if they choose to do so.
That's right. Okay. And hearing that, do I have a motion to continue this public hearing to May 21st?
I'll make a motion to continue that.
Do I have a second?
Second. To the 21st? Say 21st? 21st. 21st.
23rd. 23rd, sorry, 23rd, forgive me.
Okay, well, it's...
23rd, forgive me.
That's all right, I just...
And that applies to all of the continuations we've done so far.
So that's a Thursday, May 23rd?
No, no, it's the 21st.
It is the 21st, that's right.
It is a Tuesday.
It is the 21st.
It is the 21st, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. That's why I wanted to confirm it, when he said the 21st.
7th and the 21st, or meetings.
It is the 21st.
So it'll be the 21st of May, and we have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank everyone for coming. You say that?
George.
I'm sure.
No, no, those aren't...
Your brother will take your time.
I know, yeah, but I don't want him to...
Five minutes.
Thanks, man.
We voted, thanks, man. I appreciate it.
For a recess? No, we're just going to take...
Oh, that was him.
Yeah. We'll see you...
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the discussion of the mixed-use district. We have not really made any progress on that in the last two weeks. We have a work session coming up on May 7, and I'm hoping that by then, Connie and I can have a good, solid template for us to act on, okay? I have, I have just had no time to put it on.
So what does that do to our timeline?
It moves us ahead.
Down to the original timeline.
I mean, back.
Moves us back, yeah.
So is there a possibility of scheduling a, another planning board meeting where only this issue is discussed, so we can get back on track?
Um, I...
I mean, we heard a lot, Mr. Levesque saying, we've been dealing on this since last summer, and we, we tried our best to develop the timeline to get this to town council, so I'm certainly willing to meet an extra meeting in May so we can get back on schedule.
Me, too.
You can't be, you can't be driving up the New Jersey Turnpike that often, so.
My office is 330 Chestnut Street, I'll be here whenever you like.
I would suggest that we see how far we can get on May 7, okay? And if we, if we can't close it out then, that, or come up with a, a pretty close-to-final thing by then, that we would consider scheduling something, say, the 14th?
Okay, because it won't need a public hearing posting or... It would need a, it would need a meeting posting, but not a public hearing.
Yeah, the hearing will just be continued, okay? So that would be the proper way to do it. Okay? So...
So can we help in any way? Or are there too many cooks in the kitchen?
We, we have too many people involved, it's a meeting, and, okay, it's, I'm going to suggest that Connie and I work on this next week, and specifically, if anyone has any specific comments that they want included, or thoughts on the numbers that would be kicking around, email Connie, and only Connie, okay? And those comments, if they're incorporated, will be announced at the, at the next meeting, so that we're on the bright side of the open meeting law, okay?
You can email that, if you need to ask something.
Yeah. Just don't, don't email me or the other members of the board, because that's collusion, and we don't want to do that, okay? So we'll, we'll open the continuation of the mixed-use district. Do you folks have anything you want to add at this point? I know you came all the way up here for this, but do you have anything you want to add to the record? If not, we'll...
I'd just like to ask a question, so...
Sure.
So you sat through our session, I've already forgotten, how many weeks ago?
Two weeks.
But you, you heard some of our, I guess I want to focus on the concept of retail space to percentage of residential. We kicked around, I've been doing a lot of thinking about that myself.
Okay.
So I want to hear what your thoughts were upon our discussion, because I think, I think you threw out like 20, 20, 20, and then...
just, I wanted to make sure it wasn't going to be one, a mixed-use wasn't going to be a one-use project. That's that's what I'm trying to avoid. I wanted enough variety, and I understand the issue with variety, particularly the retail part of it, because, you know, right now, the retail environment's not very good for leasing. So I understand what the issue is, but I'd like to see something so that I can, in good conscience, say this is a mixed-use project and not a residential project. So that's why I said a third, a third, a third, and it didn't necessarily have to be retail, but I wanted three distinct, different uses.
So office space.
Office would be fine with me, things like that.
Because what I took out of our last meeting was you said you had your leasing team up, and you went through town, and you felt surprisingly there was very little space available for office and retail.
For retail, office, there's...
There's plenty.
Yeah, plenty, your word, but I'll agree.
Better than better than retail.
Better than retail. So I guess I wanted to get your thoughts on what you would envision as you, you know, in your role and your expertise, what would be a approachable percentage of office slash retail to residential?
So I'll answer both together. So directly, I like the concept of a certain number of square feet per residential unit. So I suggested, only because I took it from someplace else that imposed it on us, that you had 22 square feet per unit, and the thought that was based on the 12 units an acre that we talked about, that was only 5,000 feet or 10,000 feet, and maybe that wasn't enough. So, you know, but I think that, you know, in that realm, so whether it's 22 square feet per unit, or we'd say 25, or it's 30, or whatever, but something that would yield, you know, a requirement of, you know, 5,000 to 10,000 to 15,000 square feet of retail as a minimum, you know, and then obviously there, and then and then there would be a cap, obviously, we don't want it too big. And then that'd be on the retail side. Then on the office side, for a second, that there'd be, A, a requirement of a second type of commercial use, that it be, you know, a mix of retail, you know, restaurant and office, but so there's a requirement for a second one, and then the similar type of requirement, where you have 22, 25, you know, pick your number, that again would yield, you know, a minimum of, you know, 5,000 to 10,000 to 15,000 square feet of that second type of commercial use. And then obviously, we talked about there being, you know, an amendment to the table of uses that you, the board would specifically go down and say, yes, we want this, we want that, we want this, et cetera. You know, restaurants, obviously, would follow the special permit, which they are everywhere else, you know, and then I don't know whether restaurant would be a third type of use or whether that be in with retail or not, but, you know, so that there'd be a definitive mix on the on the commercial side. And then we also talked about that there'd be a requirement of a mix of different types of units on the residential side, that there'd be, and I think we talked about, you know, 20%, 20%, 20%, and then the other 40% could be kind of whatever.
As the market dictates.
Right, as the market dictates, but there'd be a 20%, that's like, for example, a townhouse type unit, that we would be fairly confident would be a for-sale unit, that 20% would be a freestanding multifamily unit, like in a residential building only, that'd be a second type. And then a third type would be the mixed-use residential unit, that would have commercial on the ground floor, and then apartment residential up above. And that they be, you know, the minimums be 20%, 20%, 20%, and then, you know, they balance out as the site and the and the market dictated.
So, yeah, so that raised the next question I had. So would the percentage of retail, office, et cetera, be specifically to that freestanding building? So let's say you had a three-story and a...
No, no, to a whole project.
So so you wouldn't necessarily have retail, office in every freestanding building, the exception of single?
No, wouldn't be, wouldn't be. I would say that there'd be buildings that would be, you know, along the front, if you will, you know, along Chestnut, that would be the mix.
Okay.
And then and then as the, and then as we went back deeper into the property, that I'd expect that toward the back would be more residential in nature. But that the commercial would would benefit from, you know, the parking, the easy parking, et cetera. And again, it's not huge, it's not a lot, you know, now, I apologize, I was listening, obviously, to whatever he was talking about. We submitted the traffic study, right? You have our traffic study, correct?
I don't think so, but did you submit it?
I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it.
Okay, I thought we did.
No, I haven't seen it.
No, I'll give it to you again, okay? We did a traffic study. Now, I might want to go back and amend it based on, you know, we always talk, you know, you know, 600, it was always 600 units and whatever, you know, that was always the math that everybody, you know, seemed to, so that's what we studied. So we did a traffic study.
Yeah, we did.
You know, so, you know, I swear, but anyway, we'll get, so you have it, so that you understand, so we'll resubmit it so that you understand, you know, what the, you know, what the traffic volumes are and what the what the impacts are and what the levels of service are at, you know, at Chestnut and Shaker and what they are at the other end at Dwight. Now, actually, we probably should talk to Steve because I think that improvement has been, has is almost finished, right, at Dwight? The diff improvement?
It's going to be end of the summer before they get the real traffic lights in.
Okay.
But other than that...
Well, maybe...
But the design of the pavement is what it is.
Right, okay. I'll talk to Steve and he'll decide, you know, or we can say, here, here, this is the snapshot from 2017 or 2018, whenever we did it, and then obviously we'll update it for this year.
Make sure you have the picture of the gas station.
Gas station, yeah.
Yeah, you know.
The right turn line, I think.
Right, right. But actually, my recollection was that the required, his recommended improvement back then, which was pre-gas station, was the right turn lane, and that that would be the mitigation, and now that's in, so again, you know, maybe we'll talk to Steve and update it, but anyway, we'll give you a snapshot, just so you understand the volumes.
Yeah, that's great.
The comparative volumes, the background volumes of, you know, what's on Chestnut now, what's on Shaker now, and then, you know, we can update it. And that, I mean, and that had, I think, 70-plus thousand square feet of commercial in it, you know, which is, I think, obviously, much more than than we talked about.
So that's kind of a worst-case scenario.
Yeah, and I think that's what we wanted to say, like, you know, I think when we put it together was how much, what's the max, what could it be?
When we, going back to what you're talking about, Russ, when we're talking about residential, and you mentioned three different types of residential, townhouse, condo, and apartments, do we really care? I mean, residential is residential, do we really care if they're townhouses, condos, or apartments?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I do too.
It means something to me.
Yeah, okay. And then the other question was, do we have a maximum retail? Did we ever talk about a maximum amount of retail?
We discussed it, okay?
We discussed it as 10% originally, and then you talked about, well, maybe we want that a little higher.
Right, that's what I thought. How do you feel about, it probably would never happen, at least certainly not in the climate we're in now, in assuming the climate doesn't change much, and the retail front may never happen, but how do you feel about raising that percentage just in case they're able to find something that's kind of more of an anchor tenant that could be part of a mixed-use project, but it might be over the 10% threshold?
Well, I thought to, I thought we were going to do a minimum.
Yeah, but we were also going to do a maximum.
Well, just a minute ago, I just heard, I just heard 10% was the maximum. Now, was, did we talk about 10% being a maximum or a minimum?
I thought we talked about that as originally as a minimum and something like 20% as a maximum.
Okay.
But the idea is, again, just as we don't want total residential, we don't want total retail either, you know, you're just not going to wall in there, okay? So...
I don't mean to interrupt you, Senator.
No, go ahead.
I just don't want to tie your hands if you got something good that really makes a lot of sense. Like, this would never happen in a million years, but let's just say hypothetically, Whole Foods wanted to come to your project, and if the site plan worked out and it puts you over the 10%, I'd hate to see you not be able to make that deal because we harnessed you at 10%. But the same token is, even though we have a big box restriction, I wouldn't want to see you put a Lowe's and a Walmart there either, obviously, so.
And neither would.
Of course, but you know what I'm saying?
But we did discuss, I think you said that you were, said throw it out there, remember we mentioned we had the Aldi discussion?
Yeah.
And you thought that you could do maybe a 25, was it 25,000 square feet?
Right, Aldi's 22.4.
So I think within our, I don't know where it would go, but we'd say, you know, no more than one or two retail or commercials at 25,000 feet.
And that was the original draft said that, that there would be not more than one large one and then others smaller ones.
Yeah, so you have the ability to then, so if you got one in the bag and you want to get another one, you've got that big space that you can still add to it.
Yeah, I'm just talking conceptually because I don't even have numbers in my mind that I'm even holding in on, but I just don't want to, I don't want to tie your, I want to tie your hands, but I don't want to tie your hands, you know what I'm saying? And, you know, I think a mixed-use project really has to have three good, solid components, and I think you're going to struggle with a retail one of it, one, but if you're able to get a break, and I know there's a lot of retail demand for Long Meadow, and there's no place in the world to go with Long Meadow, if you're, you know, if you get lucky, I hate to see you, you know, hold back when there might be a couple of good uses that we could really use here that would make your project good and be good for the town, but I don't know how to, I don't have it formulated in my mind yet and how to put that down in paper so that we're all happy with it.
Well, you have two weeks to think about it.
I'm going to, for the next two weeks, it's all I'm going to think about is how to write that down on paper.
Good, good.
So that when you come back in here, you didn't waste your trip up from New Jersey.
Please, it is never a waste of time, ever.
All right.
I never want you to ever think about my travel schedule.
That's how much you like these Long Meadows.
It means nothing to you. My office is at 330 Chestnut.
Yeah, I know, I believe, I know the routine inside and out.
This being a public hearing, does, I know, Maryland.
I'm sorry.
Maryland has a comment, I'm surprised to hear that. Ralph, you're next, right?
Right, do you need to, I'm excuse, excuse, I'm sorry, Mr. Redding, do you need to answer your parents just to prove you were here?
No, no. You know, I had to come, I had to come all the way from 46 Center Square.
All right, well, thank you, sure.
Hi again. No, that's okay, John, how are you? Marilyn Richards, 342 Pinehurst. I'm on the, I'm a member of the town council's planning subcommittee, and so, you know, obviously, we'll be talking about this at some future time. But after your last meeting, I hammered out an email to George. He didn't respond. I didn't want him to respond, there was no deliberation. I just wanted him to know what was going on in my head after we had what I thought was a very great discussion. Some of the things that were hard, fast things for me, like 40 acres, I'm okay with 20 because I understand what's happening here. But when you gave the information about the 5% maybe or the leasing experience, your leasing team experience, I was questioning, starting to question quite honestly, is this still a right, a good location for a mixed-use?
Yes.
Because we're not getting what Marilyn Richards wrapped her heart around with your first plan, and that was a strong commercial piece of that development. I live in the south, south end of the town, and we go to either Connecticut or the Springfield Line to buy groceries. And I was thinking about that there are needs in this end of town, and to just put 5% at that location doesn't do it for that need.
Well, that's why I was saying, that's why I wanted to have this conversation.
So and I, and so I, and I don't know what the answer is, I'm not a developer, I just know that I don't want to see just a huge retail, I mean, residential project. I would really love to see a mixed-use, and, but the mixed uses that I've had experience with are on commuter rail, or the, or the one plan that I really got excited about for Eastfield Mall was they're sort of 60/40, but they're in the middle of all kinds of other retail stuff, and so their their demographics are different. East Long Meadow's different, so I'm struggling because I want it to work, I don't want to set you guys up to fail, but this is a bylaw for the town, it's not just for 330 Chestnut. So that's where we're at.
And we're, and again, I'd be the last person ever to say, oh, I want less retail, you know, my, I can hear my partner smacking me upside the head right now. Our concern, you know, is we want successful, and you want it to be full and vibrant, et cetera. So the short answer is, whatever number we come up with, we're going to fill it, you know, it's just going to be a question of time and finding that right mix, you know, I, you've heard me refer many times, we saw the pictures of fairways that, you know, fairways, you know, kind of stumbled along at the beginning because it wasn't getting a lot of retail traction, and, but when we opened our minds to a little more office, you know, office and service and medical service, dentists apparently are like, really wanted to be in retail space now, it whoosh, and all of a sudden it was leased.
Yeah.
So, you know, and it's vibrant, and now it has a little coffee shop and that, you know, and it has, has an independent pharmacy of all things. So, you know, so those things are happening. So like I said, I'm confident that that we will lease whatever we put there, and it will be successful, it's just a question of time. And again, I think I've said many times that, you know, for our, our leasing team, the main thing was to make sure ownership understood, like, listen, guys, the rent, you know, you're not getting $35 a foot here, you know, you understand what that is, and that it is truly an amenity, it's a clubhouse that happens to pay your rent. So we look at it that way, and, you know, again, we're just setting our expectations with it. You know, but again, I agree, I think, you know, and when Ty mentioned to me, you know, he said, no, you know, you might, you know, look at it this way, and, you know, and I started talking to, you know, I reached out to one of my leasing guys and started talking about it, and he, and he started thinking about it, like, yeah, all right, I can, I can kind of see that, and, you know, and, you know, so we're willing to, you know, we're still getting our, getting our hands on it.
Two things come to mind, balance, and I'm looking at this project, I'd like to see balance. The other thing is growth management, and the only way, you know, this is the first time we've done this in East Long Meadow, and we want it to be successful. If you start with a 20-acre parcel, yeah, that's better than 40 acres, but if there is a more defined mix within the use, then you're not going to have all of a sudden all of these residential units putting a greater demand on our services, you'll have something to balance that with, you know, the commercial piece, and that's, that's why, you know, I bought into it years before you came to East Long Meadow. So I, you know, I want to see it work, but those are my thoughts. Appreciate it, thank you.
Very helpful, thank you.
Ralph?
Did you send an email to...
I did not send an email. Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. One, I want to say, yes, we want this project to go, I think it would be awesome for the town, I've said that multiple times. When the board's considering the acreage parcel, obviously, the board's considering a zoning bylaw for the town, a 20-acre parcel, there's more of a possibility to go in somewhere else. Again, that's a possibility. It also gives the developer of this parcel, if he goes forwards, an opportunity to subdivide the parcel, start with 20 acres, and make sure it's vibrant before he goes to the other portion of it. So that's something to consider. I know you were mentioning multiple stores at 25,000 square feet. If you do the 20 acres, you could put one 25,000 square foot on this, one on this 40, you have 20 acres. So it would still give them an opportunity to have two on that 40-acre parcel. So if you're thinking the 20 acres, just realize that whatever you come up with, you're basically doubling it. It's just, like I said, I know, I know we're not supposed to think about one development, but in all honesty, that's what's in front of us. So that's really what we're considering because everything would have to start all over again for another unit coming in, so, thank you. And, you know, the thing that in my mind is, yes, your retail is an amenity for those who are living in this mixed-use thing, but you also need to take into account that it's going to be an amenity for the people at Fields at Chestnut and the people in Great Woods who are all here tonight, who have nothing, no, no real retail near them, okay? They have to go through the circle to get Stop &amp; Shop, you know, or Big Y, or go, go south to Anfield. So, you know, it's going to attract more than just your, your development.
Oh, it has to.
It has to. And the amount of traffic on Chestnut Street today does not necessarily reflect what your watershed is, if you will.
No, it doesn't, your watershed's much wider, yeah.
Anything else from the board on this one? So we'll, do I have a motion to continue this to the, to the 7?
They have to go through the circle to get Stop &amp; Shop, you know, or Big Y, or go south to Anfield. So, you know, it's gonna attract more than just your development.
Oh, it has to.
It has to. And the amount of traffic on Chestnut Street today does not necessarily reflect what your watershed is.
No, it doesn't, watershed's much wider, yeah.
Anything else from the board on this one? So we'll, do we have a motion to continue this to the seventh of May?
I'll make a motion to continue the seventh.
Further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then on the next one, which is 330 Chestnut Street, again, the motion to continue to the seventh?
I'll make a motion to continue.
All is in favor? Okay, so thank you for coming in.
Thanks so much.
Good to meet you. Okay. We have, somebody's cell phone, I guess, or the name's Robbs. We have a necessity to vote again on the amended denial of special permit requests for extension of hours of operation to 24/7. This came out of the executive session we had with our lawyer about a month or so ago, and just an action we need to take. So do I have a motion to deny?
Discussion.
Well, let's have the motion first, and then we'll discuss, okay?
Make a motion. Deny the special...
To deny the special permit amendment. And a second?
I'm not following.
Okay, can you explain to the board?
Sure.
Again?
So we've had our executive session, and we had two cases that, one was to come back before the board, and the other, the board was simply requested to deny the special permit amendment request for the hours of operation being increased to 24/7. It was supposed to be considered as an administrative matter. We went over this a couple of times, because I wanted to make sure that we didn't have to advertise, that we did this correctly. So in the minutes of the meeting, it simply said administrative matter, vote to deny the amendment with no conditions stipulated, giving no reason. And so you have a one-page decision that simply says, the board denies this amendment, and George will be ready to sign that.
So this is on the six-something, you know, it may be?
Six eighteen to six three four.
So we're voting to deny the request for a 24-hour opening?
Right.
And, and can we speak further on the issue?
As long as you don't bring up all this discussed in the executive session, unless you want to go into executive session.
But we would have to advertise that you're going into executive session.
So we have a motion made, do we have the second, and then we can discuss?
All right, I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion on this? What we're doing is trying to get to a point where the matter can be resolved, okay? And it's a matter that's currently under litigation, as I understand, in Landmark, so... And this theoretically will help us move forward to getting the matter resolved on advice of Town Council, Town Attorney, I should say.
I mean, it doesn't change anything, it's just a formality, right?
That's right.
But apparently, Town Council feels this formality is...
Well, I feel like my hands are tied to discussing anything further, unless we run into the executive session. But I do think things have come about as a result of the agreement that were not, I want to say, followed? Am I parsing my words correctly?
Well, we, we can talk about the fact that we denied the request for the one at, at the circle, because we did that in open session.
Okay. Well, there were, there were assertions made that if we did this, this would occur, which it did. But then as a result of this, we now, it's my understanding, have an additional suit against the town.
If I may, so just a minute, I have them in. It was determined the discussion would be listed under other business for the purpose of resolving a pending litigation. Does that help?
Yeah.
I understand that concept, okay, I'll just, I'll step back.
Do you want, do you want to read? I have everything.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Do this by roll call, voting yes means voting for the denial. Okay. John?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Russ? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And the other thing I put on here was a brief discussion of the master plan. You all got a copy of the '76 master plan. How many read it?
I loved it.
I, I want it, I, I gotta get on it.
Okay, because I had looked at it once before, but I went back and looked at it, and really read it this time, and, you know, practically nothing that was outlined in that plan has been done.
No, I know, but it's good to see how they were thinking back then.
Yeah, you know, every master plan I've ever seen in every town never looks like what... The town looks like.
It was ages ago.
I loved it.
But a lot of the concepts were ahead of their time, okay? And the way, the way to get booed at town meeting was to mention the word clustered along with the word zoning in the same paragraph, okay?
How about mixed-use?
Ah, that wasn't even...
They didn't even know what that was back then.
It was in the master plan, okay? But I'm not sure they knew what it was.
It was typew...
Mixed-use was a carpenter that could do more than, uh, build a house.
Done with a typewriter.
I thought that had to do with a bar.
So for anybody who's burning, has a burning desire to read this 1976 master plan, it is uploaded to our website.
And everybody here got a copy, so...
And I owe you some phone calls.
We did send a letter to Denise requesting that she form a master plan committee. Nothing has happened yet, but she's a busy lady. But I think we all have a need to read and try to understand what was put in there, and think about why it didn't happen, and what we want the town to look like. We want the town to look like when it grows up, okay? I think that's, that's really what master planning is all about. Where do you want the town to go? And it's not an easy question, so we need to think about that, in a big time.
I think we all have different opinions of what we think, like, some of us think New England quaint town, you know?
Everyone's thinking a big gingerbread house, you know?
Yeah.
With cute little fences, and lights, and flowers, and all kinds of stuff.
Ten acres and...
Ten acres, which is why no master plans ever exist, yeah.
Who would consist of this plan, and this master plan committee? Would this be?
It would be a member from this group, okay, whoever wants to volunteer. It would be definitely, probably went somewhere for the school committee, definitely DPW, because DPW is one of the real drivers of master planning, infrastructure. And council on aging, okay, and I forget who else we mentioned, but...
So a collection of different...
A collection of, plus some citizens, okay, maybe a businessman and a resident, okay? So that we're getting a wide perspective. And it's a plan, it's not something that, that you're committing to, we're actually gonna do this, it's a plan, okay? And as somebody once said, every, every great plan disintegrates on first contact with the enemy. And so that's the case, you know? But at least you've got a plan, a direction, and that's, and it's important, just as open spaces, if you're going for grants and things like that, if it's not in the master plan, you get a lot less points than if it's in the master plan. So something to think about. And we have plans to endorse tonight?
No, sir, we do not, we have an extension.
Okay. So a move to adjourn?
You just need to vote to extend, there was a request for extension. The endorsement of the master plan for, pardon me... Subdivision plan for Jeffrey Lane extension.
Do we have a motion to grant them an extension?
Motion to grant them an extension.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.